Good afternoon, this is the Board of Selectmen and the Waging Personnel Board meeting, remote location meeting on March 1st, 2021 at 3:30 PM. Please ask anybody, is anybody recording the meeting? And announce that cable is taping the meeting as well. I want to note that the chat feature is available on Facebook. If you have any questions, then we'll try to address those questions as best we can, you know, during the meeting. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20 relating to 2020 COVID-19 outbreak emergency, the March 1st, 2021 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public, will void group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to view at a later date at lakecam.tv. As a preliminary matter, my name is Rich LaCamera. I'm the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Please permit me to confirm that all members and staff and persons anticipating on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Selectmen Fabian?
Present.
Selectmen Day?
Present.
And I guess at this point, we probably should introduce the the Search Committee members that are on this meeting. We have Todd Hassett.
Good afternoon.
We have Nate Darling, Corinda Dumfry, and I believe that's it, right?
Right, and it doesn't look like George is with us.
No, okay. And then we also have our MRI Solutions Search Firm. We have Buzz, we know we're gonna mess his last name up. Stan Rokowski?
That's Kenzki, it's easy.
Close.
Easy, easy.
And then we have Bob Mercer, you know, as well. And in a minute, we'll introduce Justin. Okay. So this is an open meeting of Lakeville Board of Selectmen. And being conducted remotely, consistent with the Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings as such. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you will find posted with the agenda for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So as long as there's reasonable access, is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Okay, we must have read that 300 times now.
Probably, at least.
All right. So the first thing is that the the Chairperson of the Lakeville Search Committee, or the Member of the Board of Selectmen, Leah Fabian, would like to read a letter to the Board outlining the process that we followed.
Okay. First, I'd really like to say that this was a definite privilege for me to be able to sit on this committee. Met some fabulous people. And I learned a lot too. So anyway, so the Search Committee did get together and I will read you a summary. So to the Board of Selectmen, this memo is intended to reflect the work of the Search Committee as well as providing the Board of Selectmen and the general public with an update of the process followed to date, with the result being that the Committee is forwarding to the Board of Selectmen three finalist candidates for interviews by the Appointing Authority. At the close of our original submittal date for interested candidates of January 11th at 4 o'clock PM, we received resumes from 46 candidates total. Our consultants suggested that the number of candidates received reflected positively on our community and its desirability by potential town administrator candidates. These resumes were received from candidates in 12 states, including 30 from Massachusetts. Additionally, there were three candidates from Maine, two candidates each from Rhode Island, New York, and Florida, and one each from Arizona, Colorado, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, California, Oregon, and Connecticut. Of these candidates, two have PhDs, three have both a Juris Doctorate and a Master's Degree, three have a Juris Doctorate and Bachelor's Degree, 23 have Master's Degrees, 10 candidates have Bachelor's Degrees, and one has an Associate's Degree. Lot of education going on over there. These resumes were reviewed by our consultant based upon the requirements established by the town in our profile and challenge statement, and narrowed down to 16 candidates who were selected to receive essay questions. The essay responses were due back on January 25th, and a total of 12 candidates responded. MRI consultants did preliminary background work on the 12 candidates and conducted phone interviews with all 12 candidates. On February 16th, MRI and the members of the Search Committee conducted a more than three-hour Zoom conference to review all the submittals by the candidates and discuss who should be invited for interviews by the Search Committee, conducted an executive session on February 24th at the Lakeville Police Department. The Committee, by consensus, voted to move six candidates to be interviewed as semifinalists. Each of our members prepared questions to ask the candidates, and our Human Resource Director put together a spreadsheet of questions asked to avoid redundant questions, and we have included this document in your package. Following, yes, page two. Following our interviews with the semifinalists, the Committee, by unanimous consent, agreed that the following candidates in no ranking order should be interviewed by the Board of Selectmen as finalists for the Lakeville Town Administrator position. Justin Casanova-Davis, David Marchiello, and Ari Sky. Thank you for allowing the Search Committee to be involved in this important task for the town of Lakeville. And again, I just want to thank my fellow Board of Selectmen members for allowing me what I consider to be a privilege to have served on the Search Committee. It was a great committee. I think we worked really well with the consultant firm. And I think we have some really good candidates in front of us.
Okay. Thank you, Leah, appreciate that. Good job. Okay, the first person to be interviewed is Justin Casanova-Davis. So welcome, Justin. We appreciate you applying for this position, and we look forward to hearing from you. And I'm sure some of the questions that we repeat questions from the Search Committee, but that's the way it is. So anyways, thank you.
Hi, Justin.
Okay, so I'll start off. The first question is, could you start by telling us a little bit about yourself? And what prompted you to apply for the Town Administrator position in Lakeville?
Yeah, great. First, I really want to thank the Board for giving the opportunity to be here. I'd like to thank the Search Committee as well. They answered a lot of my questions. It was a very thoughtful and professional process. So I want to thank Bob, Buzz, and MRI Team as well. So just start off with a little bit about myself. Justin, I'm the Assistant Town Administrator in Brookline. I'm someone that is really passionate about municipal government and serving. I'm really, I'm really interested in helping people. I went to Boston College, I've worked at the state and worked in Cambridge, worked at Brookline. So I've worked at all various levels of government. So city, town form, Brookline is a town. A lot of people don't know that are Brooklines a town. But I'm interested in Lakeville. I've done a lot of research into Lakeville. Lakeville has a lot of things going on for itself. It's a great community. You can just see the character, the charm of the community. I recently purchased my home and I purchased it in the South Shore. I grew up in Cambridge, about 17 years I lived in Cambridge. But I decided to relocate to this region because I love the community-town sort of feel, the charm within this region. And everything that I've seen with Lakeville, it's sort of the reason why I decided to relocate here. You know, just, just, just a great community. I've heard, you know, from a whole host of people, the great department heads that you have in the community, the people that are involved in your boards and commissions. The strategic plan was just a great document, and it really made me interested in the town. And I say this because it's important for me to represent that. I'm someone that I've worked in Brookline, I have a great team. I'm not looking just to be a town administrator anywhere. Lakeville is where I want to be. And I made this decision after careful review to apply for Lakeville. And I'm excited about the opportunities and challenges that are going in the town. And I think my skills that I've developed and honed up will make me a good candidate for you to be your next town administrator.
Okay, thanks, Justin. Can you just elaborate a little bit about how long you've been the Assistant Town Manager, excuse me, Town Administrator in Brookline, please?
Yeah, so I've been the Assistant Town Administrator in Brookline for over about two and a half years.
Two and a half years, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So I guess we start with Selectman Fabian to ask the next question. Are you out there?
She's muted.
Sorry.
There she is.
You'd think I would have that down pat by now. One thing that we didn't get a lot into in the semifinalist rounds was on grant writing. So we all know how important grant writing is. So if you could just give us just a brief, it doesn't have to be elaborate, just a brief maybe summary of your experience with grant writing or how you would go about, you know, working on that for the town.
Yeah, absolutely. So writing is a critical part of being a town administrator. When writing memos to the Board, keeping the Board informed, I think it's important in communicating to the residents in the town. I've written grant applications before. I believe I'm a strong writer. I hope my essay responses exhibit that as well. I've been a part of a team that Cambridge, Brookline, we have a lot of various grants and different projects that we apply for. Very comfortable with that. A good example is, obviously through this COVID pandemic, there's been a lot of new things, a lot of different challenges and so forth. And one project that we did in the town is we decided to donate $300,000 of our CARES funding to the Brookline Food Pantry. You know, this was something that hadn't been done in the town, in the Commonwealth when I did it. I went through, I created a contract, I wrote it up. I forwarded, obviously, to our Town Council on Purchasing. And it's been sort of a guideline for other towns and communities who are now pursuing those processes. So I'm a strong writer. I've done it before, I'm comfortable with it, and I would look forward to doing it here as well. Actually, to elaborate that, I think this town has great opportunity to take advantage of a lot of different grants here. There's gonna be an opportunity for a lot of grant funding and different ventures that the town is really pursuing right now. And that would be part of my plan and vision if I'm privileged enough to be the Town Administrator to pursue those.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian?
Good afternoon. Hi, Justin, it's okay if I call you good, Justin?
Absolutely.
You can call me Brian. So I just want to say congratulations on being here. I mean, our Search Committee and MRI gave us a kind of an abundance of wealth here. You guys are all of really good track records, is really impressed at your background and how quickly you've shot up through the ranks and, you know, working in city and town and state government so quickly. So, you know, congratulations just on being here alone. So the first question I'd like to ask is, as the Town Administrator role, you're kind of a connection to the community. And if you've done a bunch of research on Lakeville, you'll see that we've kind of gone through this period where we've had a lot of elected and appointed positions where folks just haven't submitted, you know, paperwork to go even run for those positions or be nominated for them. So if you were to be in this role, what kind of, you know, how would you bolster the community interest and kind of drum up support in the community to say, hey, these are the opportunities that we have? Because sometimes folks, I think, don't understand what happens on those boards. So how would you try to say, hey, Lakeville's a place where you want to be involved?
Yeah, no, that's a great, that's a great question. And that's a challenge you see in a variety of communities. Brookline not being one of them. There are so many boards and commissions in Brookline and Cambridge. But as you'll see in my resume, I have municipal finance background. That is my strength. What I think what's even more paramount of the strength of mine is I'm a people person. Community engagement is sort of my path. I love dealing with people. I love building relationships. And so there are programs that I ran in Cambridge called the Participatory Budgeting Program. It was a great program because I got invested in the community. I grew up in Cambridge, but I was invested in the community. We really went out to where residents were. We engaged in that manner. Because not everyone receives information via, you know, the website, social media. You have to understand that you need to go to where people are to really talk about what government's doing, what it can do. And I think that's an area where Lakeville, you mentioned that, you know, not a lot of people are in the know and so forth. I took a look at the strategic plan, and it's a great document, and it gives a great blueprint. But I noted in there, there were some workshops where 15 people were involved, 25 people were involved. So you really have to take notice of that. You really got to go to where people are. You got to go to the Arts Festival. You got to go to the farm, Ellie Farm, which I'm sure we'll talk about. But you have to be where people are and really talk about government. I really like innovating. And I think you can think about this in a variety of ways. Could you have a pop-up Town Hall event somewhere? You know, could you, could you do some things that are a little bit different than what has been done? And I feel I have a very successful track record of really engaging the community because I am a people person. I enjoy getting involved with the community.
Nice, awesome, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I believe you are muted. I'm trying to do what we're supposed to do, I guess. Thank you. Justin, I'm looking at your resume. How involved are you, where are you in the creation of the budget? And where are you right now as far as your budget process is concerned? And do you see any major challenges for the town of Brookline?
Yes, so that's my primary role. I do the budget. Obviously, as an administrator, you do a variety of things, but the budgeting, the budget is my primary duty and focus. So I'm working with our departments on a daily basis. I consider myself like a personal budget analyst for departments. So it's not only just a budgeting process when our typical budgeting season. I think budgeting is a year-long process. So I'm constantly keeping abreast of the expenditures that are going within our departments, revenue that may be coming in. And where we are in our budgeting process this year is, we actually just released our budget about a week ago. This has been one of the most difficult budgets that I've been a part of, and I've worked at the state level and I've worked in, you know, these large cities. We've had three variations of budgets in fiscal year 21 because of the pandemic. But we released our fiscal year 22 budget. An area of concern for Brookline, and I think communities in general, is revenue. You know, revenue is down. Brookline in particular, local receipts, we're very reliant on local receipts, obviously residential taxpayers. We have a diverse group of taxes, hotel motel. Our small businesses have really been affected. So I think that's an area where all municipalities throughout the Commonwealth are going to have an issue. So we're really refining our numbers during our work there. We put out a budget that's grown about 4%. And I think it's a responsible budget, it's conservative. Brookline puts out conservative budgets that have been taught well. And I feel we're going through the process now. Actually, right after this meeting, I have a library and a library advisory committee meeting with our advisory committees, our financial committee in Brookline. So it's on and going.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Leah?
Um, so I probably don't have as many questions as the other two selectmen because I was fortunate enough to sit with you the other day. But, you know, one, one thing that's really important to me is the role between the Town Administrator and the Selectman. So I'm the kind of Selectman that likes to do my research and likes to be involved, but I don't want to be involved all the time. So what is, you know, I want the information and I want to be able to digest it and make a decision. But in your opinion, in your, in your world, what is the ideal relationship between the Selectman and the Town Administrator?
Yeah. It's a good question. This, the work that you all do is vital, is important. It's a lot of work. It's, it's, it's a great amount of work. And I can only imagine what it's been for the Board without having a Town Administrator. It's a collaborative partnership. You've got to build a relationship, a relationship where you trust me. And obviously, I trust you, I'm going to trust you, you are my supervisors. But where you trust me to give you the pertinent information that you need, give you reliable information, give you all the information that you need to make informed decisions. If you build that genuine relationship of trust, then I'll know also by communicating with each one of you. Well, maybe one member likes to be involved in the financial circle. They want to know what's going on on a financial basis. Maybe someone wants to know, you know, these highlights. And whatever you personally may want, I can deliver. I'm flexible, I work well with everyone. So it's just getting to know one another, getting to know what your expectations are, and then working together to, to, to provide you what you need to make informed decisions. You guys are the policy board, and I will take your policy now. My best to you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Brian?
All right. Justin, if you were to look back at your career so far, is there a policy or strategy where you were unsuccessful in implementing either due to, either due to lack of buy-in or just didn't work out as you expected it to? If you could go back and have a second chance of that, what learnings did you have where you might kind of change up what you did the first time?
That's a good question. I would say you, Brian Selectman Day, or if you want me to address you, is that, as you mentioned in my, in my resume, I've sort of advanced pretty quickly my career through, through a variety of reasons. One, not having a Budget Director in Cambridge. I'm always pushing myself. I'm always trying to, to, to grow professionally, develop. I've had success in every organization that I've been a part of because I'm very committed to trying to do my very best. You know, at the state level, I've got a pilot initiative proposed. And in the Governor's Budget, my first time doing it, I got a special shout-out by the House Ways and Means Chair in front of the Speaker because of the work that I did. Cambridge, we've been nationally recognized and even abroad for the programs that I've run. I've had success in a lot that I've done. I would say the one, one sort of initiative that we attempted to do in Cambridge was we were trying to upgrade our budgeting system. This system had been in place for about 12 years, but it was time to change. The company that did it was retiring. And so we went through a long process. We did the RFP process, and we got a company to come into Cambridge. And we were very close to implementing. Our Budget Director left, so someone had to fill the gap. For me, I love taking on those kind of challenges. So I became the budget sort of lead on it, came the project manager. We got close to the finish line in implementing it, but we never did. I think what I learned about that was that we did a very good job in sort of getting our departments on board. When, without having a Budget Director, we sort of kept it in our silo. We did the work, they trusted the Budget Office to get it done. But I really needed to incorporate sort of supervisors, city manager. We also had a new Assistant Finance Manager. So when it's time for the prime product and to do a demonstration, it was something that they were uncomfortable with. They didn't really understand it. So in the end, we decided to keep going with the same product that we were using for those 12 years. That, that group said, all right, we'll stick with you for a couple of years until you figure out. What I learned about that process in Brookline, I thought that, I thought that product was a great product. In Brookline, we pursued that, that product. We implemented it. Sort of bought the big picture in line and got everyone involved that needed to be. I understand it's important to get stakeholders involved. It's been a successful project. This is our second year using that software and that platform. Our departments love it and from a wide variety. We have new department heads, we have department heads that have been there for 50 years, and they're utilizing that software. And it's been a success. And everyone has said that it's been successful. I learned from that process.
Nice, thank you, appreciate it.
I assume that you've been involved in the capital plan for the town of Brookline, which must be pretty big, I would think, in relationship to us. Can you kind of explain the process that, that Brookline goes through as far as the capital plan is, is concerned?
Yeah, so I could talk about Brookline, but I also talk about Cambridge because, yes, both of those communities are, are large communities with large CIP, CIP plan. In Cambridge, we were practically building a school every year and without MSBA funding. So I have a lot of experience with the CIP process. So we have, we have a, our department heads will send in their, their requests, will do review. We have a committee. We take a look at every project. Obviously, we prioritize what is anything public safety related. And, you know, it's, it's sort of, probably centered to what a lot of communities do. So you always have to prioritize, well, what is going to have, you know, an effect on public safety? What is something that can, you know, can be deferred? But it is about maintaining a, a, a plan that is done over a length of time. I think some things that some communities I've noticed have done is they don't have a forward-thinking CIP plan. What we do with all our departments is to think out, it's a six-year plan. For us, it's our 2022 and 2027 plan. So it's really working hand-in-hand with our departments, giving a long-range plan for what we're going to do. And also, you know, like anything in budgeting, sometimes a department may not get something exactly there. But you know that we've got you in line maybe in 2023 and 2024 for our future years. So it's really communicating, working in collaboration with our department heads and obviously our advisory committee as well. We're very important tool and an important member of the CIP process.
Thank you. Brian?
All right, next up. So Justin, in my experience, this is often kind of looked at as a cost center. But how would you view the role of information technology in local government in these modern times? Can you point to any specific projects that, in your past experiences, where the investments resulted in significant return on investment? It doesn't have to be monetary, it could be process, procedure, simplification, anything along those lines?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, this, the COVID pandemic has sort of accelerated the need for municipalities to take a look at their IT infrastructure. I've noticed a lot of communities don't have a strategic mindset when it comes to IT. You know, I know that the town is working with a sort of consultant at the time being because the IT Director had retired. And, you know, without having that strategic mindset, you're sort of doing a patchwork process, you're not really thinking forward. So what we've done and what I've done, like I mentioned, we brought OpenGov in, which sort of transformed our process, wanted to make it transparent for all departments to see where they were in the budgeting process. We have a OpenGov, open portal, checkbook portal for residents to now understand the budgeting process a little bit easier. They can go line by line to see what town funds are being spent on and understand the budget a little bit better. We've got an interactive budget book. We've done, we sort of opened Town Hall where we put surveys and so forth on there. But what I'm most proud of actually is actually during this COVID pandemic, the Town Administrator, and obviously the Board entrusted me to, to be the caretaker of the town's CARES funds. And obviously, there's a whole host of needs involved in this pandemic. Health, PPE, building, cleaning, so forth. But they entrusted me to do it. And what we did, we made investments in our IT infrastructure, infrastructure, both on the town and school side. We're thinking forward, forward. It's not just addressing what's in the now, but what are we going to do ahead? And the investments that we've made will, once, save the town money over the long term as part of our capital improvement process. It wasn't on our capital improvement, but it was something that, working with my acting CIO, who was going to come down the line, made those investments. And the schools, we've got new technology that I think is going to be sort of a little bit of a norm moving forward. I'm always thinking about innovation, what we can do. It's got to be a long-term vision in anything that we, in any decision that we make. So, yeah, no, I really love innovating. I love looking at how we can do things more efficient and effective. So even though IT is in my background, I've done a whole host of IT projects.
If you don't mind a quick follow-up here, I have highlighted on your resume, I was very interested in, I say you created a new transparency portal, which you touched on a little bit there, but maybe a quick summary again of what that gave the residents that they didn't have before?
Yeah, so what, what we used to do with our budgeting Yeah, so what what we used to do with our budgeting process in in Brookline with our advisory committee, we used to use some Excel forms. And our each department would put in their budget in the Excel form and we just give the uh our advisory committees just this snapshot of what, you know, what was going on in the department. Salaries are going up X percent. Uh services are going, you know, up, down and so forth. And what we did is through the OpenGov portal is now, line by line, you can go into our transparency portal and see how the town's budget is. You know, before you get this roll-up of the lines, but now you can see, well, they're actually spending X amount in overtime pay or X on longevity, or X on our copier uh repair and maintenance lines. And so it's it's more in-depth, it's more accessible. Anyone can do it. Just click our interactive budget book. You can dive into the dive into the details. You can export it in Excel. You can export images. It it's really I love it. It's a great tool. I I I wish we could um really have more involvement in the budgeting process. That's always been something that's been important to me. So it's a great tool to to encourage people to do that and uh it's been a success also. But there have been, there have been challenges. There have been challenges. Our our advisory committee have, there's a lot of members that have been on there for a long time. They're used to seeing the old way. So I had to give them the demonstration how to u utilize this portal uh from the very beginning. And there were complaints as well, too. You know, the graphs aren't big enough, et cetera. But I take that on. I work with our 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 OpenGov team and I'm a part of the customer advisory team. It's a group of select people throughout the nation that they take suggestions and advisement on their project to improve upon. So I think it's been a success.
Yes, thanks. Appreciate it. Sounds terrific.
Okay, um given the size and location and demographics of our community, what do you consider the key issues and what actions would you take to address them?
Yeah. Well, I think clearly, you know, growth within the town, development within the town is probably one of the biggest issues in the town. There's a lot of change going on. A lot of the town search committee told me, you know, changing department heads. I realize that already, but obviously uh change in the field of town development that's going within the town. But it has to be the right change for the character of the town. So in in adopting some of these changes, you have to really engage uh residents. You've got to keep them informed in the process. You got to identify stakeholders and work with them. These these projects and these processes are very, as you all are aware, time-consuming. They are, there are so many different facets to it. You need to have someone that's going to get their hands dirty uh and understand, sort of provide the big picture of what this is all leading to and keep people informed. I mentioned in my uh essay questions into the town search committee, I really think it's important. Todd mentioned that is, I don't know if I should say, but that a town planner i is really important uh part of the town. A town planner should be a part of this town uh its budget and its future because there's going to be a litany of different projects coming down the pipeline. Think of the housing choices, choices change that just passed. And changing how zoning regulations are going to be implemented. This town has done so many different projects. There's so many more coming down the pipeline. That's definitely the biggest challenge is going to be making sure that you keep the community engaged, you keep them informed about why we're pursuing these decisions, what impacts they will have and um
Okay, thank you. Um Leah.
Muted.
Oh my goodness, I'm so sorry. Um so how would you use social media in a positive way for the town?
So social media. It's important. It's important because how people receive information obviously is changing. I'm part of a generation, obviously, where I feel comfortable utilizing social media. I I've often been the person that people have relied upon, especially in our town administration office where my town administrator has thirty-plus years of experience. Uh but he's really counted on me to be sort of our social media uh person. Totally. We got an assistant who's phenomenal at what she does and she's sort of taken on that role. I've I've developed websites. I keep our website up to date for all the different boards and commissions that I'm a liaison for and sort of happenings that's going on within our office. It's an important tool to keep people informed. That's why we keep your website informed because people take that information. You also have to keep in mind with any of these things that you do, equity. Not everyone is on social media. Not everyone takes their information in that manner. I'm kind of old school. I I said this in our 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 search committee. I like to get, you know, the ink on my hands. I still love to read a paper. I'm not a fan of being on my phone and my devices like that. Also, keep in mind that some people, I know a friend that lately, they've said they only watch local access television because they don't want to get the other news from these other, you know, sort of uh providers and they feel like that's the general news. So you keep that in mind when you're dealing with your peg funds and this age of cord-cutting. Um so social media, you have to be engaged, but you also have to limit how far you get engaged. Uh I think we talked about this before. You you don't want to engage in some of these listserv conversations of the back and forth because you have to recognize that sometimes people are just inherently not going to agree. But you talk with everyone, relay information. And it's important that you utilize social media to to get to as many people as possible. But understand there, you know, not everyone takes, gets information in that form.
Agreed. Okay.
Uh Brian.
All right. Uh Justin, once you've gone through the budget process and the process has been brought to town meeting, has been approved um for the coming fiscal year. Can you describe the the level of, say, oversight and reporting that you would expect to have with that department head through the year?
Yeah, so one, as I mentioned before, I love budgeting. I love working with my department heads. Um I love being informed, but it's also a good opportunity. If you do this properly, you understand what may be some of the challenges that are going to be upcoming in the next budget cycle. Something to think about, you know, we may need to invest more in our, in Brookline, we have a budgeted capital outlet as well in our general fund. So I worked, for example, my fire chief. We made some reductions in that budget capital outlet, but working with him on a pretty regular basis, we're saying, you know, this is something that we're going to have to focus on. And that's what I brought up to our advisory committee when we had our meeting the other week. It's like we've budgeted for this, but this is something down the pipeline. So I I work, I I love this. Um so I'm regularly in expenditure reports. I'm regularly looking at revenue reports. And so I'm going to work with our department heads. I want to, I want them to know that I, you know, one, obviously uh paying attention to what they're doing, but giving them an outlet to talk to me, to uh talk about any concerns they have, anything that might be coming down uh in the future. So i i it's really a collaboration there. Um I think I I think I answered your question. Was there another, was there another facet to your to your question?
You touched on it. If I can maybe rephrase slightly, I mean, would you think that the department heads are given some level of autonomy at that point? Or do you want to make sure you're checking in and things are looking good, not so good?
Yeah, no, you're definitely checking in. That that's your role. You're definitely checking in, but department head, that is their budget. Some uh some department heads don't feel comfortable uh with their budget. So they want you to be a little more uh hands-on. And that's why I said sometimes I I consider myself um your personal budget analyst. Obviously, I have the big picture in mind, but depending on the the relationship that I have with a department head, some people need you to be a little more hands-on. Some have been doing it. Like I said, I had a department head for, who served the town for fifty years. He knew every line like the back of his hand. I I was learning a bit from him sometimes, you know, in our interactions. So you understand that. You understand the 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 people that you're working with. We're always checking in, but they have on time. It's their budget, not a micromanager. I believe in the power of team. We're all one team. We're all working for uh to one thing. So it's really understanding the relationship and the partner that you have. But we're always checking. I'm I'm always checking regularly.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
What are the most important qualities you seek when uh hiring a town employee? Why are these qualities most important to you?
Yeah. So I think one of the most important qualities, and I think we often hear about it, but we sort of have a framework where we don't really truly promote teamwork. Uh we're sort of individualistic. We you you set certain goals and that's sort of American culture. But I really love team orientation. I really look at how um how willing people are to take on different challenges. Are they investing in professional development? Are they okay with not just doing, you know, what they're assigned? Or do they want to grow? Do they want to take on different projects? I'm a hard worker and my background is very unique and different. I think this is part of why I have um I have um progressed so quickly in my career. And so I look sort of some of the similar qualities. Obviously, you take a look at resume, you take a look at some of their highlights. What have they done? What are the projects they've handled? But there's some, also some intangible things that you just see with the character of someone when you deal with them. I've been asked many times, I've been a part of the uh interview process, not only for my department, but other departments. People regularly ask me to be a part of their 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 interview committees because I just you can pick up on if someone's passionate about the work that they do. If someone's going to work every day and really loves what they do, what they do, they're going to be a good member of your team versus someone that isn't really interested in doing that work. It's it's just another job for them. I I feel like I'm a people person, like I said, so I really look for those sort of little things that may not be reflective on a resume that will make that person a good team player, uh willing to take on different projects and really grow the best and professional development, obviously work for the best of the town.
Thank you. Um Leah.
Um just sort of a follow-up to um I I touched on grants, but going back to um what Brian had asked you about um the department heads um with their own individual budgets. Um so, you know, the library has areas where they can get grants and um what is kind of like your motivation to get your department heads to sort of really be looking for these kinds of things? You know, the COA Council on Ageing, they have their, you know, different place where they can you know, um I I guess I'm still kind of going back to that grant question because, you know, free money is always great.
Yeah.
Um you know, we do, we do pretty well. Our our police chief does pretty well getting a lot of grants, but um what, you know, what do you have you know, to help them along, so to speak?
Yeah. Good example of that is, you know, we're we're very aggressive in getting grants and we're very successful in Brookline. But there's always a new grant. There's always a different grant. There's something that hasn't crossed the radar, especially when you get a monotony of applying for the same grants. You know what's required. You know this thing, but there are so many different grants. A good example of that is in the town of Brookline, we're in this uh effort to have zero emissions by twenty fifty. And so what we did, and I was a part of this, is we wanted to overhaul our fleet and start investing in electric and hybrid vehicles. And so there was a petition, more article passed, and we started working towards that effort. None of my departments had ever had sort of, it hadn't crossed their table to invest or to look for grants to pursue this initiative. But I knew this was something that was coming down the pipeline and something that I of interest to me as well. And so I realized there was an electric vehicle charging infrastructure grant. So I kept my department head, and this required a couple of departments. We required our DPW and our building department and our purchasing engine as well. So, well, we've got an opportunity for this grant, something that, you know, the town is looking for us to do. This this is what is required, and then it required something from each of the departments. I became the focal point. I became the person that was going to uh sort of submit it and keep everyone pursuing this grant. And so I'm always looking for different grants and things that we can utilize, especially in this time, you know, we understand revenues are limited. We've got to make the most uh bang for the buck. And uh that's something like, as I mentioned before, I think Lakeville is primed to take advantage of a lot of different grants. Resiliency grants, you know, I look at uh, I look at um complete streets. I I I look at green uh the green communities. There are so many different get grants that are going to, that this town can take advantage of. And I love to be a part of that. Obviously, there's going to require work from a variety of different departments. But we should be pursuing them and I think another thing that I keep in mind is that, you know, working through this and being at the state level, you know, having Senator Rodrick's and having represent uh representatives that are, you know, a a part of this community and uh House, uh the Senate Ways and Means Chairman, he brought, that's a vital component to this. So, you know, I I I want to be aggressive with that and I think the Lakeville will do very well in regards to that.
Okay, thanks.
Uh Brian.
Thank you. I think we've touched on this a little bit, but I've got a question I'd like to ask anyways. Um perhaps it hits it from a slightly different angle. So if you do join social media and get on the the Lakeville resident pages, uh you'll see that they're very vocal about kind of keeping a small-town charm that we have and also very vocal about not wanting to increase our relatively regionally low property taxes. So somewhere around eighty-seven percent of our tax income is from residential property taxes. So what strategies might you consider utilizing to limit the direct impact to households while coming up with funds that might be necessary to preserve some of these character items that you might see, say, in the master plan?
Yeah. Great question. I love this question. Um as I mentioned, I I I decided to purchase my home in this region because I like the small-town charm. I like the uniqueness. And Lakeville's a very unique place and it's a beautiful place. And I've walked, I've gone to the Ted Williams camp, I've walked in in between the lakes and so forth. And I can understand why people want to keep that charm and that feel. It's a, it's a beautiful community. At the same time, and this is what we often see, what do residents want? Residents want great schools, want the roads paved. And they uh and they want public safety and they want all these things without seeing their tax bill rise at all. So naturally, there's an inherent conflict in that, right? So what we have to do is we have to communicate. We have to say, one, be transparent. This is what the town's finances are. You said, you know, residential taxpayers bear the burden of paying uh taxes in this town. So what you can do is diversify your revenue. And that's, and that's something that intrigued me about this community as well because some communities are unwilling to take on different things. You took on recrea recreational marijuana. You're looking for ways ways to diversify your revenue base. And so acknowledging that, well, in order to to minimize the tax burden on residents, we need to expand economic development, piece commercial, uh you know, industrial and so forth. And that's the direction and that's ultimately the decision that the town has to make. You know, you want to preserve your character. You want to lower your tax. You got to diversify your tax base. Um something else that sort of intrigued me the other day when I was, I'm sometimes when I go into punishment, I was watching the Selectman meeting. Uh and uh
We're sorry.
No, don't worry. You guys work well together. What I noticed, what I noticed was you guys discussed the CPA. And I'm someone who has, one in Cambridge CPA was long adopted. Purchased a home in Whitman. Voters recently approved the CPA. Um I don't engage too much, but I I'm I'm knowledgeable about the CPA. So I sort of went on Facebook as we have a, you know, Whitman page as well and just outlined what are the benefits? What are, what can you do with the CPA? A lot of people aren't really informed about the surcharge assessments and different exemptions that are available. And and now in Brookline as well, it's been rejected a few times, but now town meeting approved it and is going to ballot as well. So I've done it from all phases. I've done it in a community that is already adopted, a community that is going to adopt it and a community that's now voting on it. But when you look at preserving the character of the community, there's a good opportunity to do that. There's preservation grants. There's different things to preserve open space, to preserve historical aspects of your town. So it's 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 keeping that in mind, saying there's a variety of ways that we can go about this. You have, not every idea is a great idea and not every uh change is the best change. You have to pursue the right change that fits the character and the wants and desire of the community.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Um we have um ten minutes left. Um is there any follow-up questions from any of the board members? No? Okay.
I already, I already got to spend a wonderful hour with Justin, so I I will, you know, let you guys.
Okay, um Jason, what questions do you have for us?
Justin.
Justin, excuse me.
Um so I've been very thorough in my research. I think Bob and Buzz will tell you, I was probably one of, I was waiting for this opportunity to come. Um I'm I'm someone that's very passionate about municipal government. I don't really have a lot of questions because I asked Bob and Buzz. I've done a lot of research and obviously I asked a lot of the town search uh committee uh members, uh some of my questions. uh, members, uh, some of my questions and they were gracious to answer them um, for me. I think a bit of it is just if I'm privileged to get this opportunity, I'd like to understand what you're really expecting of me. You know, what are, what are, what's the first thing that we like to tackle? There's so many things to tackle uh, in this town, but you know, really what do you want to prioritize and so forth? I feel well informed, I don't know if I have any questions um, in particular. They've been answered a lot from my previous discussion.
Okay.
I, I would give him my answer on what I'm hoping for, if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, I mean, I, I would say that, you know, I'm really looking forward to a town administrator that does want to come in and uh, take that kind of information charge that you referred to where, you know, helping the residents not only, you know, become informed of some of the issues and make it easy to find. Um, it's very challenging where we've got a lot of contentious issues going on in town and getting the, not only just the information, but the correct information is certainly something that is often a challenge to do. Not everybody loves to read case law or state laws or anything like that, so. You know, certainly if we do talk again, I would, I would welcome any ideas you have in that space.
Can, can I say something in regards to that?
Sure.
Um, something that I didn't really mention, which sort of coincides with that, is that I love data as well. I love, I love sort of looking at data, I like breaking it down. And one thing that I'm very proud of amongst the successes that we've had is that every budget that I've been a part of, we've got the GO4A distinguished budget award. And a, a component that is being able to explain things where it's easy to understand, where people can understand that information. But even more so is sort of in Cambridge, one thing that I worked with our departments was, was improving performance measurement. There are so many different things about what goes on in a community and what we had before and what we're trying to improve upon in Brookline. It's so garbled and people don't really understand what does this all mean? And so I work with my departments in Cambridge and what we did is we, we actually got recognized, which was the only municipality in Cambridge, excuse me, the only municipality in the Commonwealth to get recognized for special performance measure recognition. And that particular is because it breaks it down, people can understand, it's really, it's really, I tell this funny story about myself, I went to Boston College, I was a political science and history major. I wasn't a budgeting person, I actually waited till the very last minute to take my math requirement because I was hoping they would change it, uh, because that wasn't my thing, but I'm a budget guy. So I understand that people don't understand tax levy and all these different things that Todd and I will, will nerd out and geek out on. But people don't really get into that, so I break it down to make it a little bit simpler, understand. So I love those things, I love, I love taking on these data, looking at IT, being forward thinking, sort of breaking things down so people can understand that simple measure. And that coincides with being a people person, you know, you, you understand who you're talking to and what they need and how you present that information.
Um, Rich, do you mind if I? So for me, my, I, you know, I will admit my weaknesses and Nate Darling will also admit my weaknesses. Um, land use and, you know, planning and all that kind of thing. So um, I, I would really like to see, you know, a new town administrator be able to come in and, and actually give Nate Darling and the planning board and all those, those folks some, you know, some, some help because I need that help too. Um, so that's one thing that I would really, you know, be looking for, looking forward to is getting, you know, some assistance in that area and also along, along with that, um, you know, uh, good explanations to the townspeople on, you know, sometimes why something may not be ideal, but still may need to happen, whether it's state law that says, you know, types of housing or, you know, so I do think that's a concern for Lakeville right now, I do think we're at the crossroads um, where we have to start making some tough decisions on, on that kind of stuff. So that's one thing that, you know, I, I would definitely be looking to, to get some help with from our next town administrator, but just so that, you know.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I could talk about that too, but I don't know what a hard time is going.
Yeah, Rich has the last comment, he wants to get out.
No, I, I just wanted to, uh, you know, ask him if he had uh, anything to say, any closing statement to say about, you know, um, the position and uh, maybe why you want to become the town administrator or Lakeville? I mean, you've already said some good things, appreciate that. So if you wanted to add anything else, uh, Justin, are you all set?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity. Um, and once again, thank you to the selectmen, thank you to everyone that's been a part of this process. It's, it's a great, it's a great community, I'm really excited about it. I'd just like to reinforce a couple of things that I've said. Um, Lakeville is in a, Lakeville is a community that's going to have a lot of different challenges and opportunities. I'm excited about them, I feel that my experience, my background have dealing with a variety of projects. Obviously, in these large communities, you deal with, you know, so many different projects, no 40B projects and, you know, robust capital improvement plan. But I really love working with people and I really love the, the small community field, that's why I relocated here. Uh, I, I want to work in this community, I'm not looking anywhere else. I've done the research, this isn't, I don't want to just be a town administrator, I feel that opportunity will come to me uh, uh, eventually in, in the right place. Uh, because I've been preparing myself, I work hard, I think it's been recognized by my colleagues. I hope that you guys will see that when I'm approachable, I'm a hard worker. You know, I, and, and I really think that our values are aligned, I, I mentioned this before, you know, I had put in my resume and my uh, cover letter before I saw the profile statement. When I saw it, I saw this commitment to excellence and I, I already knew it was the right decision to do this. But it really sort of struck me because I think that's what I want my career to be known as. Everywhere that I've gone, people throughout the organization, not only my supervisors, but people, mid managers, the clerks within our departments. I think you will find overwhelmingly that they will have positive things to say. They'll say that I'm a hard worker, I'm a team player, I'm someone that loves to work hard, play, uh, play hard as well. I often have a smile, uh, I love the collegial feel, um, I'm really excited about this opportunity. Um, I think Lakeville is going uh, in some, in a great direction and I'd love to be a part of it. So thank you, thank you for the opportunity. I wish you well, no matter what you decide, but hopefully I do, uh, hope that you will decide to pick me as your next town administrator.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks, Justin, we really appreciate your time and all your input you're giving to us, so. Thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there was one comment on Facebook, do you want to recognize it?
Uh, basically it says that uh, great answers and hands up for already watching.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up, so.
You can see that there's a, I'm sorry to interrupt, but there's a dedicated group of people here, I see the volunteers, I was watching the the, the project and review committee and the planning board in particular because of those land use issues that selectmen, uh, select woman Fabian was mentioning, so you can just see how committed people are to this town and we want the best for it, so. Thank you, ma'am. Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
We're all set.
All right.
Have a great day.
So um, so everybody knows our next interview is at four forty, so there's going to be a few minutes here, you know, in between uh, candidates. They had myself on mute. Um, the next candidate here to interview is uh, David uh, Marciello, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's pretty good.
Yes.
Okay, so the first question we have for you, David, is uh, can you start by telling us a little about yourself and what prompted you to apply for the town administrative position in Lakeville?
A little bit about myself, um, I'm fifty-four years old, um, I hold a master's in public administration, a bachelor's in political science, a jurist doctorate degree. I've been an attorney for twenty-five plus years. I've worked as a town manager, town administrator, graduate assistant, um, fifteen plus or minus years. Um, and all of my uh, background has been in municipal and employment law um, and land use as well. And the reason I applied in Lakeville is because um, it's, it's a perfect fit. Um, I'm very fortunate in my uh, being an attorney that, you know, I'm able to, to uh, you know, be in a position where I can really look for the perfect fit, the perfect job. I grew up in a town that um, it was very much like Lakeville when I was growing up. Um, I watched it change into something that uh, you know, grew past its uh, roots. And um, I don't want to see something like that happen in Lakeville. I uh, currently live in a town that um, is very much like live uh, Lakeville, um, twenty-two years in the town of Rehoboth. And because of all that, um, you know, my background, where I chose to live, where I grew up, um, I, I think it all meshes, it's, it's a very good fit for me.
Okay. All right, um.
Oh, here I am.
Oh, I'm sorry, you weren't there, Leah?
Uh, I am now, am I next?
Okay, um, you were the town manager in uh, Millbury for uh, three years, it looks like?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the town administrator, it looks like it was for a contract, did that make? So it wasn't really, it was just uh, filling in, I guess, for that time?
Uh, no, and I, I, I had a, a three-year contract in Millbury, I wa- I was a town manager under a um, under a strong charter. Um, I spent ten years uh, approximately in Rehoboth as a town administrator. Um, there was like three or four contracts uh, during that period of time. And um, also the interim town manager for about a four-month period in Lunenburg while they bridged from one to the next.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Leah.
Thank you, so welcome to the Board of Select and part of the interviews here again. Um, I, I, I said earlier that um, it was my privilege to actually meet with, you know, the folks that we did in the semifinal round. One thing that I don't think, we, we touched on very briefly, but didn't have uh, like one question dedicated to it during the semifinal round was on grant writing. Um, if you could possibly just give us some, you know, maybe your background experience in grant writing, that's something that's, you know, it's important to everybody, but it's important to us right now in Lakeville too. We need to, you know, I think uh, ramp up some of our grant efforts here. If you could just give us a little bit of a background.
Excellent, um, I think grant writing is similar to being an auto mechanic. Um, you know, I can tinker on my car, I, I can uh, you know, keep it running, I can uh, you know, change the oil, I can, you know, do minor repairs. But um, when it comes to the intricate getting down to the, into the weeds, into the fine details, you really need to, to reach out and get experts in that field of that particular grant that you're looking for. Because the devil is in the details, you know, grant for one particular function um, isn't exactly like another. And, and they're really looking for you to get into the weeds and that's how I've always done it, you know, I can get us eighty percent of the way there, but I'm going to want to get an expert to help me along the way to get us over the hump. And I've been very successful with that. Um, if you saw my cover letter, I took an eighteen thousand dollar fine, a DEP fine and turned an eighteen thousand dollar fine into a hundred and forty-three thousand dollar grant, which produced over a million dollars worth of revenue. Um, and that was, you know, by using my skills as an attorney and knowing where I'm good and also knowing where I need to find an expert in that particular area and, you know, get some help. Likewise, and um, that was just one grant in uh, in Rehoboth, there were others. But in um, Millbury, we got millions and millions and millions of dollars worth of grants. We got grants that we were one of one, we got an EPA grant, we got a DEP grant, one of one. And there were thousands of people that applied for it. But the way we got it was, we got people that were experts in that particular, you know, subgenre. Because if you're writing um, just a, a general grant, you, you're not getting into the fine minutia because the person reading the grant is already an expert. And so they're looking, they want to get the most bang for their buck. They don't want a generalization, they want you to, to show how their money is going to turn into bricks and mortar and um, effectuate what their uh, mission is. So um, I, I have plenty of experience generally, but when it comes down to the fine minutia, I, I reach out and grab an expert to get me over the hump and it's been very successful.
Okay, thank you.
Um, because everybody talks about budgets and uh, what's the uh, budget process and experience that you had, had? Uh, I guess most recently. And um, what are the, what are the biggest challenges for uh, budgets coming up in fiscal twenty-two?
Was the question, what are the biggest challenges, was that the sub-question?
Yeah, everybody, a lot of communities are struggling with their, their fiscal twenty-two budgets. You know, at this point from a revenue, you know, standpoint, so can you explain the process?
Sure.
Uh, you would go through to uh, to put together those budgets and the experience that you have doing that? A lot of the uh, challenges for fiscal twenty-two.
Alrighty, um, my experience in Millbury, the charter was very specific, I had complete control over one hundred percent of the budget. Um, it was my budget, it wasn't the finance committee, it wasn't the finance director, it was my budget. So I had a, a fifty-one million dollar budget, capital and operational. And um, if you look back at my cover letters and the answers to my questions, you could see that I brought free cash from uh, around a million dollars all the way up to two point three million dollars. I brought uh, our reserves from two percent to ten percent. Um, and, and that was in a three-year period. And that was um, not with major cuts, it was actually with expanding some of our um, uh, some of our departments and hiring people. Um, and there was no major amounts of tax increases or anything like that, it was, was very sustainable. So I understand the, the process from beginning to end, I can do the whole entire thing. Um, um, and your, your sub-question was what are the challenges? In particular, um, in Lakeville, you're going to have a one percent reduction in revenues according to your cherry sheets. And you have a thirty million dollar budget and that, I'm looking over at my notes because um, you know, I, I looked this up on, on the internet, I looked it up with the um, the, the uh, DLS and DOR. Your excise tax is going down by twenty-three percent, uh, twenty-three thousand, your total receipts are going down by three hundred thousand. That's about a one percent reduction in revenues, your state aid is staying level, level at one point five six million. Um, one percent reduction is, is not a good trend, but it's not insurmountable in the short term. What would I do? Um, I would look at your, your growth numbers, I'd look to see, can we in the short term um, absorb some of that with, with growth? I'd look at your levy, um, where are we in the levy, can, can we maybe squeeze that a little bit in the short term? I'd look at, and this is all on the, on the revenue side, of course, we have the, the receipt side too, but I'm dealing with the revenue side right now. I look at your abatement, I, I look at your real estate abatement. Um, how aggressively have, have you um, gone into your abatement? Uh, and would it be wise, would it be politically acceptable to maybe release some of that abatement? And of course, you'd have to see, um, are you going to have any challenges against it in the next couple of years? You expecting any, uh, any claims against your abatement fund? Um, and if you are, then you, you need to hold that in, you know, in abeyance. Um, and then of course, I look at your free cash and I look at your stabilization. And I see in the short term, would it be wise and politically savvy and um, would it be a, a good idea to maybe go into that in the short term? Um, so that's all on, on the, on the revenue side. But of course, you have to look at the, the other side. Um, uh, initially, the first thing I'd do is I would um, call all the stakeholders right to the table and say, how can we absorb this one percent? Is it maybe not hiring people? Is it maybe um, putting us on a, a reduced one-twelfth or, or something along that, that line budget? And see, can we absorb this one percent in the short term? Um, we had a similar situation that was far more extreme and every town did uh, during the recession, uh, oh nine and, and ten, um, where the governor made nine C cuts in the middle of, of a budget. And um, we had like a thirteen or fourteen percent revenue decrease. Um, it, it was dramatic and that was halfway through the year. It was already when contracts had already been uh, established and, and we were already hiring people and, and paying raises. And we were able to uh, during eight, nine and ten, um, absorb that without any layoffs, um, without any uh, production in services. Um, it wasn't easy, but it wasn't draconian either. So my experience is that I've seen it, I, I've lived both through expansions and reductions. Um, I know the, the budget process from beginning to end and I can do the entire thing beginning to end. And I've also worked in a scenario where um, the, the finance committee was, was, you know, front and center. In Rehoboth, the finance committee was front and center of the budget and, and I was just a piece of it, I was just one part of it. But um, in Millbury, it was my budget and I presented it to everyone. So I've lived both sides and I'm very comfortable doing it either way.
Thank you, um, Leah?
Did we miss Brian, I think?
I'm sorry, I wasn't like first? I'm sorry, wasn't I first?
Went Rich, Leah, Rich.
You can go, Brian.
All right. First of all, David, thank you for being here. You know, the number of applicants we got was impressive. And just the fact that you're sitting here as one of our finalists, you should certainly be proud of. So, thank you for your time today. And also, as I look at your resume, thank you for your service in the military as well.
Well, thank you for noting that. I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
So my first question, if you wouldn't mind, is if you look back at your career, is there a policy or strategy that you were unsuccessful in implementing? Either due to lack of buy-in, or maybe it was implemented and just didn't work out as you expected? If that was, if that item was important to you and you had a second shot at it, what might you change the second time around?
Thank you for the question, and I'm gonna give you two examples that varying degrees of not working out the way that I planned, and what would I do differently? One was, while in Rehoboth, I entered into a regional agreement that bought our salt. And it was a dramatic reduction in cost. And on its face, it looked like it was saving us a huge amount of money. But with good public administration, it's not all about economy and efficiency. It's also about effectiveness. And it wasn't effective. The effectiveness actually fell flat. During a storm, what would happen is, the bid called for that you paid by the delivery. And if you looked at what the salt distributor company did was, they delivered to the shortest distance rapidly. So they would go to the quickest one and then make five or six deliveries during the middle of a heavy storm. This was like a thirty-hour storm, and would run out of salt and sand. And they were making five deliveries to the town two miles down the road. And they were only making one delivery to the town that was, you know, twelve miles down the road. So I don't know if I'm still there. The computer just went a little crazy. So assuming you can still hear me. Okay, very good. So what I learned was that it wasn't necessarily all about, you know, how efficient and how economical it was. It does you no good to not have sand and salt during a storm. It's great to have lots of sand and salt in May, but if you're not getting it during the storm, its effectiveness is zero. So I learned very quickly that, you know, you have to really pay attention to the mission. And the mission, most importantly, is effectiveness. And then you budget, can you afford it? But if it's not effective, it's a failed mission. So that's one lesson I learned. And a similar scenario that I learned from that mistake, I changed over our telephones to a voice-over-internet protocol. And I saved, and that was for the whole town. That was for every department, it was for every building. And I saved a dramatic amount of money. It was a huge amount of money. But I learned from my lesson, if it's not effective, it's not going to work. So I had a fail-safe. I had a double backup. I made sure that we had cellular backup that could automatically transfer any phone calls to cell phones. And I also made sure that all of our most essential nine-one-one calls and radio backup calls had a wire backup. They had a copper backup. So if the internet went down for any way, shape, or form, we had two fail-safes behind. And then I went one step further and I made a contract with the local sheriff, the county sheriff, that in the event that we ever had a catastrophic failure, he would send his command center down and we could connect up. Well, lo and behold, we did have a catastrophic failure. We had a hurricane come through. I don't remember if it was Sandy or if it was Irene, but we had, one of the hurricanes came through, and it knocked out all the phones for days. But we had all the backups to keep us going. So I did learn from my first failure that you, even trying to save money and being efficient and being economical, you have to be effective or it's a failed mission.
Great examples, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're back to the right order here. I think it's your turn, right? I don't wanna get myself in trouble, Leah.
No, is it my turn already?
Well, you started with the grand question. That's why you put us out of sync. If you want, I'll go back to. Okay.
Well, because I skipped a turn too. So, because I, like I said earlier, I've spent an hour with the candidates. So I also want you guys to have enough time to ask your questions.
Okay, so it's back to me then.
Yes.
So, question about capital plan. What experience do you have about putting together a capital plan? And what was the process and the procedure? And putting together the capital plan for both Millbury and Rehoboth?
Hey, Millbury and Rehoboth. Starting most recently in Millbury, we had a five-year capital plan. And it actually got amended because Millbury was in a position where we had a very extensive storm water management plan, because we were right on the Black Zone River. And the Black Zone River was considered a river of importance, and it was polluted. So we had a very hefty plan, an expensive plan. It was four million dollars. So that being the case, the process was, we, when I first came in, there was an existing plan. We had to do an audit of it. We had to look at it and see where were we in the five years? Because five years rolls over, you know, you might be in year one, but you know, that's year five of, you know, the previous years. So yeah, we did an extensive audit to see where we were, what were our targets, what were our benchmarks? And we audited it, and then we reviewed it, and that flows over into the budget process. And what I had done was, I made a special home rule petition. And this is now pretty much what is happening all over the state. A lot of towns have picked up on this. And I made a local home rule petition that automatically put money into five stabilization accounts. It paid for our bands and bonds for infrastructure. It paid for our stormwater liability. It paid for OPEB. It paid for unfunded liability payments such as comp time, sick time, buyback, vacation buyback. And it paid for capital improvements. And that stabilization fund was self-funding. It automatically happened every year, and it happened from outside revenues with our marijuana revenues. Marijuana revenues automatically went right into those five stabilization funds. And I also bolstered that by altering the way that we did our budget so that I was almost guaranteed, if you will, and if you look at the history, it proved out, to have a dramatic amount of free cash every year. We went from one million to one-five to two-point-three. And that was planned so that I could fund these capital projects, OPEB, storm water, and anything else that we had to do. So that's what I did in Millbury, my most recent time. Back in Rehoboth, we had a five-year plan, but in the middle of it was when those nine-C cuts came. Those nine-C cuts came, and it really put a halt on long-term capital spending. So what we had to do is, we had to revamp the whole thing and see what projects we could scale back, what projects we could pause, and what projects had to go forward. And what we determined was, we had to keep our infrastructure healthy. We had to make sure the guardrails were working. I had to make sure the potholes were filled. We had to make sure all of those things were happening and crack ceiling. So that at the end of the, we didn't know how long the recession was gonna be. You know, it ended up being three years of repeated reductions. You know, we needed to plan that at the end of when we sunshined out of that, we weren't gonna have crumbling infrastructures and bridges that were failing. And so we went on to more of a repair instead of build capital program, and that's what we did.
Okay. Got a question on Millbury. You mentioned marijuana. How many facilities, cultivation facilities did they have? And how many retail outputs do they have?
We had the same as you. We had Nature's Remedy. And I had a very good working relationship with Nature's Remedy. Nature's Remedies cultivation was in, obviously, Lakeville. And their retail and medical was in Millbury. We had a second one that I was dealing with at the end that was in the process of permitting. And so we had one that was going to be a testing slash grow facility. That was in the process of going through the permitting, and one that was already a sale of both medical and recreational. We only had those two available licenses based on our, based on our alcohol licenses. That was what the formula made, is we only had those two. But what I did was, wasn't just myself, but it was spearheaded by me and the town planner and the planning board. We wrapped those around development agreements, so they don't sunshine. We made sure that it took a special permit to do these things. And because it took a special permit, they had to get the special permit. We would work in a development agreement that didn't sunshine. So I had into perpetuity that we would get three, three, and three for the impact fees. You know, and you'd get that for your five years. But thereafter, we still got a payment into perpetuity of three percent of sales. And that escalated at two-and-a-half percent every year. So we kept up with Prop two and a half. And we put that onto the retail, onto the agreement of the land, so it ran with the land. So if they ever sold the business, the next owner had the same agreement. Now, if they changed the use, if it ended up becoming, I don't know, a widget factory, well, then that all disappeared.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Leah, now it's your turn.
Now, it's my turn. And I'm not muted, and I'm not video off. Okay, so I'm curious about what your ideal relationship would look like between, looks like between the selectman and the town administrator. So, for example, I like to do research. I, you know, I like to get involved, but not always totally involved. I mean, you know, so we all, you know, all selectmen have their own personality types. What's your sort of ideal relationship with the selectman?
I think it revolves around three tenants. It has to be professional, it has to be respectful, it has to be cooperative. Has to be professional in that this decorum, there are rules and regulations. We all live by the rules, regulations, and it stays respectful and cooperative as well. And that cooperative, it's a team. You just made a very good point. Some people like to do research and some people like to, you know, I don't know, stand back and, you know, just get a report. And so that has to be how the team works. If that's what the team is gonna be, we need to know that's the dynamic of the team and who's responsible for what. And allow the people to do what they're tasked to do. But likewise, everyone has to stay on point. So someone has to be, you know, with the whiteboard, saying, okay, did you get, did you get the research back? No, I need more time. Okay, did you call this person and, you know, get in touch with them? No, you need more time. And someone has to be keeping it going. So I think the town administrator is that person. He's not necessarily leading the team, but he's keeping everyone on task. So I think that would be the perfect working relationship. That, again, these remain professional, these were respectful and cooperative. And the way I do that is, I give you a report, and my report looks like the whiteboard that I have in my office. It literally looks like I pulled the whiteboard off and handed it to you. So here's what we started with, and then through time, here's where we went. Here's what we're expecting. Here are the inputs and outputs, and what are the deadlines? And then we're checking them off as we're going. And, you know, the whiteboard ends up getting page after page after page, because something may be, you know, nothing's going to happen for five months because we already sent it into the feds, and we're waiting for a response. But week after week after week, I'll just have a little bullet point in my report to you. I haven't heard back from the feds yet. So you know we're still on task, you know, and then maybe you may task me. We'll make another phone call.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, thank you.
Ryan?
So the role of the town administrator is kind of a bridge between the local government and all of our residents and constituents. We've had an issue over the last few years where a number of elected positions and even positions that are nominated and appointed have gone unfilled. So how would you kind of drive community interest and engagement to perhaps drive some more awareness of these important roles, what they do? And try to draw people out to be more interested in taking part?
That is a fantastic question, because that is a difficult task. And it's not unusual for the town of Lakeville. So I commend you all for being involved, and you've hit the nail on the head. But how do we address it? I think the way we address it is to be involved in the things that we can be involved in locally in the community. You know, you show up, when I say you, I mean, people. People show up at the baseball games and the community events. And you let them see that there is someone that has a voice and an ear to hear. And every time that you get someone that's talking to you about a problem that they have or an issue that they have, you engage with them and see, do they have a potential solution? Maybe they, if not they, want to run. Maybe they know someone that has the expertise and the will and the time. Because as you know, it's, it's a lot. And, you know, life takes over sometimes. So I think by being a role model in the community, by being involved in the community, by showing people that it's a necessary, important and honorable part of their community, you can get people to step forward. And if not them, they may know someone that they can recommend. You know, the, as I'm thinking of examples, the PTA, the Boy Scouts, the church groups, the business leaders, they usually have some type of Kiwanis Club or something. You go to these, a veterans' clubs, you go to these, and there's usually a voice there. Someone that is willing and able that you can, you know, help get over that hump and to get more involved.
Awesome. Thank you for all those examples.
Thank you.
Okay. Next question is, given the size and location and demographics of our community, what do you consider the key issues? And what actions would you take to address? I know you mentioned Rehoboth a number of times, and they're a very similar type of community that we are.
I think you folks have already addressed it. I think you folks have already outlined it. And here it is. You folks have done the first step in that. And my job as a town administrator isn't to tell you how your town needs to look in the future or what is important to your town. You tell me what is the future goal of the town through this, and then we implement it. And then we put to task all of my experience as having a master's in public administration and being a lawyer. And we get the committees and the staff and the community involved in getting the upswelling to get this implemented. Because if these goals aren't implemented, it's just wishes and hopes and dreams. And then what will happen is, you will get whatever the free market dictates. You'll get development the way the free market wants. You'll get expansion the way free market wants. And you won't be able to plan for how to get to the next level. So my job as a town administrator is to work for the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen will dictate to me what are the important issues, and I will steer the ship. But you will give me a point. You'll tell me, go to this place, and I will steer the ship to get us there.
Follow-up question. Did the town of Millbury and Rehoboth have a master plan?
Yes, and there's two complete, separate stories to that. The town of Millbury had a master plan, and I hired a professional planner. And we implemented the things that effectuated. The rules, the bylaws, the procedures, and it was going per plan. And that shows, you know, a very methodical and procedural step-by-step process that you would want. That is contrary to where Rehoboth is. Rehoboth had a master plan. Rehoboth had a master plan, but during my tenure, there was no political will to actually do what needed to be done to get to that next step. And what we're seeing is is a, in my humble opinion, a travesty. We're seeing market affected, pardon me, my earplug just fell out. We're seeing that the market dictate what's happening. Development is happening the way that the market is 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 saying it's going to go. And that has been literally based on a nineteen vote swing at town meeting. There was a bylaw that if it if it passed by nineteen votes, would have prevented what is happening now. And I I then thereafter was no longer the the town administrator. And since then, in the, I don't know, we're we're into about ten years since I've been there. There's been no political movement to get back on that track. They've never brought it back to town meeting, they've never really tried to push effectuating the 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 rules and and procedures and bylaws that we need to get that master plan implemented.
Thank you, Leah.
Yeah, yeah, could I just ask a follow up to that? So there's, I think we may have touched on this, but because it has to do with the master plan. I know you've done a lot of research on Lakeville and we're all sort of dancing around a planner decision. You know, what are your thoughts on 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 planners? Or a town this size and for what we have going on?
Well, Rehoboth and and Lakeville have similar demographics, similar budgets. And I fear that Lakeville may go the the way of Rehoboth. We have hired planners in Rehoboth, but the planners have been people that are in the planning position. That they they aren't necessarily someone who has decades of experience, they're not someone necessarily that has a masters in planning. And that's because there's not a lot of political will to take that next step. And let me tell you that the difference in Millbury, I hired a professional planner. I paid her eighty one thousand dollars, I gave her a fifteen hundred dollar stipend. And the stipend was, but thirty percent of her work was to be a grant writer. And that thirty percent of her work returned twenty times, it's not an exaggeration, twenty times of her salary. We got millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars worth of grants. And more effectively and more importantly, we implemented a lot of the necessary rules and regulations and procedures to implement the master plan. And and that is going to 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 pay unbelievable dividends. You can't unring the bell. Once some development has happened, it's there. Once someone has has built, it's there. And as an actual direct example, they went ten months without a planner before I got there. And in those ten months, and they had a consultant and and the person wasn't there full time. And in those ten months, they had buildings and developments that went up that were unchecked, they had bonds that didn't get filed. They had bonds that expired and the town ended up having to finish those developments, pay for the streets, fix the things that were wrong. You know, as soon as I hired the planner, that all went away. Now, I I I want to take that one step further. I think this was a question that came up in the the prior interview. I think that you folks have a a real, a a great opportunity. The state has changed the the way that retired people can can collect money out of the pension plan. You can now hire a retired person and not have to pay them benefits and not have to pay them in into their retirement. So and 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 you can have them as a full-time person making full-time pay and they can collect their retirement. And you're not paying any of their pension, you're not putting in into any benefit. So what does that mean? These retired people for this period of time until they take it away can double dip. And they want to double dip, they want to go and make forty, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars on top of their pension. And so you can go and get a retired professional planner who has twenty or thirty years of direct experience. Bring that institutional knowledge in, set you up, get your master plan going. And you can get them on pennies on the dollar. Because if you pay them forty or fifty thousand dollars, that's on top of their pension. They're already getting their pension and now they're getting forty, fifty thousand dollars. And you can actually even entice that even more. You you can say as part of the package, okay, we're gonna give you whatever the amount is, twenty-five, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars. But then we're gonna give you X amount of dollars into your five thirty-seven plan. So you make a one-time payment into their five thirty-seven plan and that is like their 401K that run is run by the state. Well, right now it's returning at fourteen percent. So if you make a one-time payment of a couple of thousand dollars, it's gonna make fourteen percent interest, you know, just accumulating. It it's a win, 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 win. So for pennies on the dollar, you can get a professional person to, pardon me, really get you going toward your master plan.
Thank you, Brian.
No, it's Leah, it's your turn, that was a follow up question.
Yeah, I think I took up enough time, like I said.
You have to ask the follow up, you have to ask your question, sorry.
Question right now. I'm going, I'm I'm giving my time to selectmen day.
Okay, recognizing me on the floor, are you? So David, it's it's often looked at as a cost center in budgets. But how do you view the role of information technology in local government in modern times? And can you point to any specific projects and past experiences where investment in that area resulted in a significant return in investment? Whether we monetary or otherwise, if you have another one in addition to your voiceover IP story, that'd be great. But if you want to talk about more, that's fine too.
In in Millbury, I don't remember the name of the company. But we put on our webpage basically as a transparency thing where you literally can compare this versus that. This budget versus that budget, this expenditure versus that expenditure, you can see all the benchmarks. You can see all of our goals, where we started, where we ended. And with that, you can actually compare it to other towns of similar demographics, other towns of similar, you know, budgets. Now, that's what the people see. On the backend, we can manipulate those numbers left, right and center and we can actually see who's doing what with the numbers on on their end. So we can actually get a a good snapshot of, without people even saying what they're interested in, knowing what they're interested in. And you can do the same thing with your webpage, you can do the same thing with with Facebook. You can see where the traffic is, where people are, where they're, you know, really interacting with it. And you can then make that with benchmarks. So you can take that and say, how do we take this metadata and make it work for us? And and put it into packages that people want? So those are two things that we did. And and one thing that was part of the the overall package on the internet, we also put a reverse three-one-one calling that had geo-tracking on it. So if we had an area of town, let's say, that was going to be shut down because of, I don't know, water mains being replaced or at one point in time we had blasting that was going on. As soon as a car drove into an area that we circled on the map, this cell phone rang and they got a text telling them that certain roads had detours and would map them around it. Or in the next ten minutes is going to be a blast, you know, please don't call the police department, we expect a blast, you know, if you were in this area. So we took, we took that technology and and used it to our benefit to not only inform people of ongoing things, but also, you you know, if there was a a town meeting that was coming up or a major vote that was coming up, we could get the technology out to them through text messages. So we integrated that all through that same webpage enhancement.
I could ask a quick follow up, that was a great example. Did you guys also do the reverse or residents could use that to inform you guys of things or was that a step not yet taken?
We had the two-one-one, but it wasn't through us, it was through the school department. And what we found was we partnered with them. And so if someone had a question, they would call into the two-one-one and even though it wasn't ringing in, you know, my desktop, it it was just a a financially easier way to do it, we didn't have to buy two users, if you will. So we had it, but it wasn't directly through the town, it was through our school department. And as a follow up answer, I find that I like to get information out through technology, through through Facebook, through social media, through Twitter and not allow a lot of comment back. Because there's other channels to get the comment back. If the comment coming back is on that platform, it just goes awry. People start talking about sideways things and then, you know, conspiracy theories start coming in. And then someone posts, you know, a funny picture of a cat, you know, doing something and it just completely goes awry. So I find that if we can control that platform, get our information out and allow response, but not through that platform. They can, you know, call me, they can email me, they can visit me, they they got plenty of, come to a selectmen's meeting, write a letter. But I I try to limit the the sideways, you know, chaos that can go on in the the cyberspace, you know, medium.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, what are the most important qualities you seek when hiring a town of plea? And why are these qualities most important to you?
So important quality, I think the most important quality is merit. The person has to be qualified for the job. If I'm hiring someone as a dog officer, an animal control officer, I I don't want someone that, you know, isn't an animal control officer, doesn't know anything about animal control officing. You know, so I think merit and and having someone that is qualified for the job is the the top checkbox. You have to have that first. Then we get into, are they a good fit? Are are they going to stay around long term? Is this gonna be a stepping stone and they're gonna be moving on? Because if I'm going to invest time and money into training the person and getting them up to speed and all the resources, I I don't want it to be, you know, not a good fit for that person, not a good fit for us, and it just doesn't work out. So I take it in that order, I take it merit, you know, qualifications first. And then are they a good fit and are we a good fit for them?
Okay, Leah.
Well, I know, Dave, you kind of touched on my next question, which is how would you use social media in a positive way? I know you sort of touched on it in what you were just saying, but, you know, on day one, take a look at everything. How would you, you know, how would you use social media in a positive way for the town?
I I love social media and because it is a positive tool, if used effectively. What I had done in the past is I had hired a an intern and, you know, give them a grant or some small stipend. And the intern can can literally manage the whole thing, get our message out, get the meta metadata in, give us graphs as to where things, conversations are going, traffic is going. So that way we know, for instance, as an example, I found out that almost ninety percent of our interactions, the positive interactions, happen five minutes after lunchtime. People are good, were getting on during their lunch break and they were just clicking on Facebook and reading. And then they were taking it to the next link and then, you know, doing research, you can see all that. So if if you come to my page and then you click on something and then you click on something else and then you you research something about it, I see all that. And so I can then see, well, this is important to that one person. Well, no, it's important to fourteen percent of the people. So fourteen percent of the people, that's probably something I should put at at a top priority, maybe we need to look at that. And, you know, you can put your agenda out, and I'm not saying agenda like the selectmen's agenda, but your your policy, what you're planning on doing. You know, you're thinking of starting a cell tower study or something, put that out there and see, put the feelers out there, see where it goes. And watch that metadata and then receive input and have hearings and and have roundtable discussions. And it it's a very positive tool, so that's how I would use it and that's how I have used it.
Okay, Brian.
Right. David, once the budget has been passed, town meeting is, you know, approved by the residents, what what level of autonomy do you believe the department head should have after that point? And what kind of level of reporting and oversight do you generally like to have for that coming fiscal year?
It depends. Is the, is the entity an autonomous entity? Are they an elected sovereign board? If they're an elected sovereign board, then the the law is very clear, that money has been given to them, it's their money. All we can do is have oversight and, you know, for the grand picture of of where we're going, is it in keeping with the overall major plan, that's all we can do. But if it's not a sovereign board, if it's someone that answers to the the our jurisdiction, the selectmen's jurisdiction, then we should have interaction ongoing to see, are they on task? Do we need to change the, you know, the the track, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it 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 depends on where the 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 budget is. But as a generalization, I think quarterly, you need to get all the stakeholders in the same room because it's a big picture. You know, i- if there's one budget that's going to affect, you know, and implementing one budget is going to affect another department's ability to do something, you need to keep everyone on task, so quarterly you should be looking at that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, we got ten minutes left, is there any follow up questions from the board?
I have one question, I asked our first candidate, I've not had a chance to yet, if we wanna try to get them all in.
Sure, go right ahead.
Thank you, Leah, did you have any other ones? I don't want to take your time either. So David, my final question here, if you've checked out any of our Facebook groups for the local residents, they're very vocal about the fact that they want to keep Lakeville's character and charm the same. Also while trying to minimize, if not, you know, never have a, you know, property tax hit. So you've probably already seen in our budget that about eighty-seven percent of the tax revenues come from the residents' property taxes. So what kind of strategies would you use to minimize impact to every household here while trying to do things like implement that master plan to keep the town's character, whatever those might be?
Well, I can tell you what I have done. And what I have done is I I've looked at outside revenue sources and shared agreements and partnering with nonprofits and foundations. And I'll take the first one. With those, those development agreements, if you can have a special permit, if you can make a bylaw that says if you want to do this in this zone, you need a special permit. And if someone wants to do this in that zone, for instance, sell marijuana, have a retail shop, they can do it. But that special permit is gonna come with a price. And we can then take that through my home rule petition that I wrote and earmark it toward all of the things in the backside that we need. Funding OPEB, funding our stormwater, funding our our bans and bonds, funding our capital improvements. And what does that do? If you're already taking care of all that, that frees up the other money for operational. So you don't have, you can stay within the levy limit, you can stay within the two and a half percent and still expand and keep up with the the necessary expansion over time, you know. You need another police officer every so often, you you need, you know, whatever. So I have done that. And also the the other thing I've done is, if you look at your nonprofits, your foundations, sometimes you can partner with them and save something or build something. In Millbury, we had a foundation nonprofit that we had historical buildings that we partnered with, they rehabbed the whole building. And that and and we ended up saving beautiful mansions and buildings through partnering with with this foundation, no tax dollars involved. In Rehoboth, we built a a community tot lot, we built a complete football, baseball stadium with with sprinklers and and, you know, goalposts and 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 lighting and concessions. Zero tax dollars, talking multi-millions of dollars. Veterans memorials, zero tax dollars. So you can partner with these groups and, you know, I'm an attorney, land use. I can see a a piece of property that's not good for anybody, but maybe could be good for this nonprofit. And you, I literally called up Pop Warner Association, said, I hear you're looking to spend your money that you have to buy a piece of land. And then what are you gonna do with it? Well, then we're gonna start funding it and eventually in twenty years, we'll build something. I said, what happens if I give you a piece of land for a hundred years on a lease with the caveat that you put Pop Warner and the high school and and, you know, our kids on that land? you put Pop Warner and the high school and and, you know, our kids on that land? And they took their hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they said, well, that will buy us some dirt. And I said, well, we'll do in-kind services. You can use all of our trucks. You can use all of our Baccos and and bulldozers, and and we'll do in-kind donations. We're going to hire people that are licensed mechanics and and operators and whatnot, and let them use our trucks on weekends. And by letting them, and we got this all cleared through um through our insurance company, and by bringing them on, we had licensed operators using our Baccos and our bulldozers, they built this whole entire stadium, and they used their money to do it, but our equipment. Zero tax dollars.
Okay.
Excellent examples. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Um, yeah, do you have any questions for us, Dave?
I'd like to know what your um perfect uh town administrator relationship is. Because this is going to have to be a marriage. You know, I want to come to a a place where I like being there. You know, every every place I've ever been, I've hosted Christmas parties on my dime for the for the people. Uh, we have celebrate uh advancements and and retirements. I want this to be like I am showing up every day with my family, and I'm not hating being there. So I need to hear that I'm a good fit for you, and you need to hear that, um, you know, excuse me, you need to hear that I'm a good fit for you, and I need to hear that uh uh you're a good fit for me, because this is going to be a marriage if it is.
Oh, yeah. Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I'll jump in. Um, so for me, the most important thing between the selectmen and the town administrator is, you know, trust. Um, I want to be able, if in my personal life, I've been running like crazy, doing whatever it is that's making me do be crazy, um, I want to know that I can pick up my papers for a meeting and feel confident that I don't have to sit down and do twenty hours of research. And I think trust develops over time. Um, and I always go into relationships trusting. Um, but I, you know, what what's important to me, too, is that our department heads have someone that they can, you know, rely on to say, you know, let's say one of the department heads says, oh, you know, this this type of grant isn't my, you know, can you work with me? So I really want, you know, our next town administrator to to be able to give some of our department heads who who need it, who requested some guidance. Um, I'm always willing to learn new things from anyone. Um, so I, you know, I'm looking for a good leader to be our new town administrator and looking for that quality, too.
I appreciate that. Um, and during our our prior conversation in that earlier interview, I noted that um I was the only uh town manager to ever implement policies and budget um that I insisted every department head get certified, licensed in their um in their area. The town clerk get licensed, the, you know, I wanted the um DPW director to have all the licenses of all the people below him. Because how can you be running the DPW if you don't have the license on the sewers, you know, or whatever? You know, it's good to say you're the manager, but you need to know that that's being done correctly. So I budgeted that every single department head get licensed and certified in every single area. And not only does that benefit them, but it benefits the town in things that you can't even see how it benefits you. The second you do that, and the second that you hire me, your bond rating goes up. Because there's a section of your bond rating that you can actually uh effectuate is twenty percent of the number. And that is how effective and and um, you know, expert are your leaders? And are they licensed? Are they certified? Yes, 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 yes. So I can effectuate that just from the very beginning, saying, all these people are going to get licensed and certified if benefits them. I'm going to send them to all the MMM meetings. I'm gonna, I'm gonna budget for them to um go and and take classes in their expertise. And likewise, during our our weekly meetings, we're gonna talk, and I'm gonna listen, and I'm gonna hear how we can each share resources. So if someone is in need of something, maybe another department or another um uh, you know, uh vendor that a department deals with can give that resource. And, you know, and I I know I'm running out of time, but I I noted many examples that there is always a time when one department that didn't even know the other department needs something, steps in and says, if I had known, I would have been doing it already. And that's just something that, you know, builds a good team.
Okay.
Okay, Dave, is, uh, we got two minutes left, Dave. Um, if there's anything else that you'd like to uh say or add?
I I thank you for the last two minutes, and I I would just add that um the last question and and answer is is very important to me. I'm looking for a place that I can feel comfortable, um, use all of my skills, all of my expertise, all of my knowledge and and education, but that I'm happy. I want to go to work and be happy. And I and I think that that's a two-way street. I want you to be happy as well. So I I chose Lakeville because of the fact that I think that this is a a good place for me to land. And I hope that um you've now learned who I am a little bit, and and you feel the same way. I I look forward to um, you know, having the opportunity to to prove um that I can be that person and learn that you folks are the same people that I think you are.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Very much.
And uh
And what's the next um step?
The next step is the board uh will discuss it and decide uh who we want to hire.
Alrighty. And is that in the next day, the next week, the next month?
You never know, it could be tonight.
Oh, I wasn't expecting that answer. Well, you have my cell phone number. It's like an electronic leash. So, you know, it goes with me everywhere.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
It's been a pleasure. And thank, really nice meeting you all, and thank you for the opportunity. Bye-bye now.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, we got uh ten minutes. So, um, if anybody wants to uh do anything in the next ten minutes, uh.
I'll take a break.
Okay. Okay, I guess we're ready. Um, I assume, I'd like to introduce uh Ari Sky as one of the other uh candidates as for town administrator. And um, I know that you already know everybody on the search committee, but uh my name is Rich LeCameron, the chairman of the board. And then we have, I know you know, Leon, Lillian, Lillian, Lillian. Leah, uh, who was a the search committee, and we have Brian Day here as well.
Well, good to meet you, me all three of you.
Good to meet you as well. Okay, so um, you know, some of these questions, or maybe some of the questions you already answered with the search committee, but some of us have to ask uh some of the questions. Since the board has to ask some of the questions.
Absolutely.
So could you uh start by telling us a little bit about yourself and what prompted you to apply for the town administrator position in Lakeville?
Sure. So I've been in government pretty much my entire career. Um, I uh first, um, I went, I I went to college, oops, sorry, to college, uh, Brandeis, Scrip in Maine, going to college at Brandeis in in at the eighties. And um after that, after I got to college, I um really wanted to work in Capitol Hill. So I got a job down there. Um, found that was kind of a, while I enjoyed the kind of the, enjoyed kind of the splendor and the and the pageantry of it, it was kind of an empty, it was kind of empty. And um I uh uh really decided I wanted to do something that was closer to um, sort of closer to people and doing doing work that make a difference. Uh, my parents were both um public servants. It's probably where I got it from. My dad was a member of the clergy. Uh, my mother was lobbyist for a life insurance company. So we, you know, we we were government and so community service was a big thing in our family. Uh, I um um went back to grad school, I went to grad school, um, got my master's in public administration, and um got a job working in local government. And for most of my career was in Virginia, um, for a good part of my career, anyway. Aside from a couple of years in uh um in Pennsylvania, outside Philadelphia, as a borough manager for a small town. And then uh, but I always kind of always wanted to find a way to come back to New England. And um, uh, the opportunity came up, I came up in twenty twelve, for to be the CFO for the city of New Bedford. And um I applied for it and was fortunate enough to to get the job. It's been a very gratifying experience. Um, I had a good chance to kind of, well, it's a financial manager, but also general manager, too. I I manage five departments and have a sort of general, a a fairly wide breadth and um involved in the numbers that aren't even really financial in the way the city, in the city's administration. Um, uh, but, you know, what I always wanted to do was general administration. And um, I'm at the point now where, you know, I'd like to um take that opportunity. I think Lakeville's a really interesting opportunity for that. Um, you're a town that's um kind of at a crossroads to some degree. Uh, there's um uh development pressure, there's things going on, there's a there's a need to uh professionalize the workforce to build it into a high-performing organization. And um those are things that I have a lot of experience with. Um, I've dealt with, I I've worked for large jurisdictions and small jurisdictions, some of the fastest-growing jurisdictions in the country, some of them in some in and jurisdiction that was determined against um everything to stay as rural as possible. So um I think I have a unique skill set in in that regard that can be very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Leah?
Okay. Uh, so we, I know in our um semifinal round, we touched just a tad bit on grants here and there. But um grants are something that are, you know, important to everybody. But in Lakeville, I think that, you know, where we've let some opportunities go by, and I'd really like us to be better at the grant stuff. So can you um give us a little bit of your background in grant writing or um working on grants or?
Um, well, one good thing about having served in most levels of government is that I've done most things. And um, you know, grid writing, well, not as big a part of what I do right now, something I've done in the past, other other positions at other levels. Um, I certainly understand grants administration as well as anybody, and understand the compliance piece and and sort of putting together. We're actually working on a safer grant right now that I've been pretty involved in uh for the city. Um, and uh, but I've also worked on park grants, um ARP grants, MSBA, um, working with MassDev on site readiness grants, um, all sorts of things along those lines. So I've had a lot, I've had a lot of experience in grant work, both at both at the compliance level, as well as the administration level and the preparation level.
Okay, thank you. Selectman Day?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, so Ari, if you were to look back at your career, uh, was there a policy or strategy that you were really proponent of that um either failed because you didn't feel that you got the buy-in for its support, or it didn't work out in the way that you thought? And if you could go back and kind of have a redo, what would you adjust the second time around?
That's a really good question. Um, so I think, I think I'd point back to my experience in the nineties, um, working as a as a borough manager, a small town, um, outside of Philadelphia, only about twelve thousand people, um, so about the same size as Lakeville, but much denser, only about one square mile, um, built out, um, had a budget of, I don't know, maybe three million dollars. Really, you know, this is, you know, this is my 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 first attempt at at trying to be a CAO. Um, and uh, I I knew what I wanted to do there, but um being, you know, the other, being on the twenty side of thirty, um, let's just say, I I I say that that I knew, you know, what I what I wanted to do. And um, I probably, um, I I learned a lot in that position from the standpoint of of um the importance of achieving buy-in and communication and bringing people along, getting to understand why this is, why why something is is important, should be important to them as as it is to you. Um, and uh, and some some, choose some good there, but um, we achieved, but but not some things that I really would have liked to have achieved there. And um, you know, some of it was friction with the the governing body, some of it was friction in the community, of partisan politics, because it's, you know, Pennsylvania, Philadelphia after all. And um, and, you know, a lot of things that I wasn't really mentally prepared for at the time, the way that I, you know, kind of learned to be over over the years. Um, and, you know, that's one of the reasons, I'll I'll be honest, one of the reasons why Lakeville intrigues me, why I'm looking at a at a town administrator position right now, is that, you know, I'm in my fifties now, and 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 I, um, you know, the the end is closer than the beginning. And um, I'd really um like to find an opportunity to really to 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 take what I've learned from a from a management standpoint, from a organizational management standpoint, from the uh sort of getting to yes, and and using that, using those skills um in a place like Lakeville, I think it can really be helpful.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Uh, as you know, budgets are a main focus for any town or any city, as a matter of fact. And can you kind of explain your budget experience and the process that you go through, and uh some of the challenges that you uh are anticipating this uh coming fiscal twenty-two?
Yeah. Well, I I have some small experience in finances. So, yeah, I I I've done a little bit of work in that regard. Um, the um, uh, I have um worked, see, my career through one, two, three, three, I've got this one, four recessions over the course of my career. Um, the um, uh, the ninety ninety-one recession, um, the Y2K bubble, um, two thousand eight recession, and then this one. Um, one of the things that's so different about what's going on now compared to um some of those is that those were, is they were triggered by events, but they had most of the characteristics of sort of a business cycle kind of recession. This this situation that we're in right now doesn't really feel quite like that. Um, I think there's a lot of reason to believe that this could be an intermittent situation that we could come back from. That that being said, um, you have to be careful with the process. When I was in um, uh, two thousand eight, I in two thousand eight, um, when I was with Fauquier County, um, we went through a process where we had to lay off a decent percentage of the workforce, um, and maintain services, um, and our our board of supervisors, that's what the structure is called in Virginia. The board of supervisors was determined to um to to ensure that services would not be negatively affected. Um, we laid off a decent chunk of people, reduced the workforce substantially, and managed to maintain. Um, the importance is having a a workforce that's dedicated and ready and and willing to engage. Um, the thing you have to really careful about is, especially in a situation such as we're in right now, is that you don't cut meat from the bone too deeply. You don't cut to the bone too deeply, however that metaphor goes, I think, yeah. And um, and that we um continue to have the capabilities that we need to be able to 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 provide services that 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 are necessary. Um, there are a number of strategies that one can adopt. Um, I am somewhat encouraged by what's going on in Washington. I think that there's a fair amount of relief money coming in, um, that should be able to bridge localities over over the next year and a half or so. Um, I believe Lakeville, um, from the information I've seen from GFOA, is due to get between two point one and two point five million, depending on which calculation you use. So um, that's, you know, I I and I know that your, um, uh, it's according to your recap, your um, uh, local receipts, I think, are down about three hundred thousand or so. Uh, so it should be enough to carry the, to to carry the load, is what I'm trying to say. And um, and maybe do some things that you want to do from a structural standpoint, um, and elsewhere in, from economic development standpoint in the in the community. So um, so there there is some opportunity there. Um, but uh, the 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 communication is key, making sure your staff understands what the strategies and what we're doing and why, treating them like adults, and making sure they they know, you know, and 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 keeping in touch with them, so the staff, so they so they understand, and doing the same with the community, being, you know, as frank as possible as you can be about uh the situation that the town is in, and um and what what we can do to, what what type of strategies we're going to pursue to go forward. Um, you know, they they elect you guys and to uh to 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 help manage through that, and um and you can, you appoint the town administrator to provide the the advice that you need to be able to, you know, manage things from a policy standpoint. So um, it's just really important, and I'm sure you'll get into this question later on, it's really important to have that kind of connection going on, that that communication going on, so that um everybody understands it on the same, is on the same uh, is on the same road.
Thank you. Uh, Leah?
Yes, so that does bring me right to my next question, which is, um, you know, selectmen common, all different types of personalities. So um, what is your ideal relationship with, what would be your ideal relationship with the Board of Selectmen?
So I've worked with governing bodies through my my career. Um, you know, the uh, the 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 structure of government in Virginia is a little bit different. As you know, counties are the primary service providers. Um, and they are a um, they they are, they are a lot, they they're a line of management that's very similar to what you have in the towns. There's a board of supervisors that hires a county administrator, who in turn hires a staff. Um, so it's a direct report. Um, you know, uh, cities in Massachusetts are a little bit different, especially Strong Mare City, and we have that, you know, but uh, but part of my job as the CFO is to kind of act as the bridge between the administration and the council, and try to make sure we get to get things done and get to yes. Um, I I think in the case of a of of town management, um, you know, I've I've gained a lot of perspective over the years on, you know, over in terms of how this all, you know, how this works and doesn't work, and seeing it not work and work. Um, you know, the the, in my mind, the the, as soon as you have that breakdown, we are, with the town administrator and the town and the board of selectmen are not in sync in terms of with direction, running the same way. It it shows really fast. And then things tend to break down. And um, so it'd be my, you know, my desire to have a very sort of close, functional, effective working relationship with the Board of Selectmen. Um, you know, the the town administrator really is kind of your right hand. And um, you need to, you know, you you and and you need to know what that right hand's doing, but you also need to be able to like kind of let that right hand, you know, But you also need to be able to like, kind of let that right hand, you know, do the things that it needs to do to be able to manage the organization. And um, and, and go, and go from there. I, I think that um, you know, Lakeville is at a is at a crossroads in a number of ways, and one of the ways is you know, the whole question of the town administrator position and how you decide to, to administer that. You had Rita here for a very long time. And um, and that, that, and she, you know, did things a certain way, and that was the way that, I don't think, I don't know if any of you were even I don't, I don't, I don't know how many were on the board at that, you know, while she was here. But um, it was, you know, it was a, there, there was a kind of I don't, I, I guess kind of a comfort level of a way of things that had always been done. Um, and for a town like Lakeville, which at the time was not changing very much year over year, it probably worked just fine. Um, but Lakeville now is, you know, heading a place where things are, there's some pressures and things have changed a little bit, and this demands on, on time and, and um, if I were a member of the Board of Selectmen, I'd, I'd want to have a town administrator who I, who I could trust enough the operations of the town so that I could focus on policy and the big decisions that you need to make. Um, so that's what I try to do for you. And um, that doesn't mean that my expectation would be to um, to not be overseen and not to be, you know, yeah, but, 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 but that, um, that there would be a um, a, a kind of a, a, a collective understanding of goals and um objectives and, and what we want to see at, and, and where we want to see things down the road. So one of the things I would suggest is, is a, you know, it's a goal-setting exercise early on, so that um, there's not to be anything super elaborate, but something which gives a sense of, okay, this is what we want to, this is what our onboarding process looks like, this is what we want to have, this is what we want to see down the road over the next year. And um, that, that sort of clearly defines some of the things that, that they're looking to do. Um, there are a lot of questions out there right now. For example, um, your master plan, um, which is, which is a great document, um, timeline's a little tight, it's pretty good. Um, you know, one, it highlights the need for sort of a, uh, an upgrade in terms of the, the professional staff. Well, staff complement, you know what I mean? In terms of the, in terms of the, the, the staff, uh, especially the planning side, conservation agent, things like that. Um, that, you know, those, those things cost money and they require resource choices. Um, while I know the town administrator is responsible for, you know, submitting the budget and so forth and so on, I, you know, that, that, that can happen in, in a, um that can happen in a, in a, in vacuum. There has to be a process that starts with a conversation, you know, with a series of conversations with the board of selectmen. Okay, what do you, what do you want to see? What, what do you want, you know, what are your priorities going forward? And it'd be my intention to make sure that we have a constant feedback loop and, 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 and conversation.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Brian.
All right. Um, Ari, it, it's often considered a cost center that money is just thrown into. But how would you view the role of information technology in a, a local government in modern times? And can you point to any specific uh projects in your past experiences where investments into that area actually resulted in a significant return on investment? Monetary, process, procedure, whatever your choice?
Wow, yeah, I can give you a lot on that. Um, so uh, part of my role in, um, New Bedford is overseeing I T. Uh, I oversee the I T department, so and, and the function, and that, that's, you know, enterprise management is a big part of, just a big part of what I do. Um, you know, there, there, I'm going to approach this question from two sta- two directions. The first one is kind of the downside risk of what happens if you don't manage your I T effectively. And I'll give you two quick examples. The first is from my own experience in New Bedford, twenty nineteen, we were hit by a cyber attack that was rather substantial um, and damaging. Um, and it required a lot of, you know, fortunately, we had backups. Um, we managed to save our financial system, and we were able to rebuild a good portion of, you know, most of the network fairly quickly. The reason we were able to do that was because we had done a lot of work ahead of time to prepare for this type of event. One that we hadn't done yet was install the new A I um antivirus software that we had just gotten the money to do, uh, you know, for that fiscal, for that fiscal year, which would have probably prevented the attack. Um, but, you know, we have that in place now. We have a secure, much more secure perimeter. Um, the downside risk of, of not being, having your, your, your network properly protected is just huge. So that's the first thing. Um, you know, the, the, the second, the second example I gave is a, 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 which probably I won't I won't name, but I'm, I'm, I know a lot of people there, I know their, I know their situation, and my counterparts there. Um, when COVID hit, um, they um tried to go remote and um, and do the things that a lot of, you know, a lot of us did, you know, um, but um, they were unable to do so because their network just didn't have the server capacity, and they didn't have the other remote, remote dialing capability. We were able to make a few adjustments and get it going pretty quick. So that gives you, you know, it's important to have good staff. Um, now, having a good staff means that you can do a lot of things in-house too. And uh, you know, in New Bedford, we've created, you know, created an open checkbook um, uh, system, which is a great transparency measure for it to allow uh, people to see what the, what, what the town or the city, in our case, is spending money on. Um, and uh, we've um, uh, we've developed, you know, we've developed a lot of our kind of, number of permitting and of our meetings, so uh, applications and so on, done all those things in-house. And uh, that, that, that's saved us a lot of money, I think. And um, has allowed us to be able to um, provide a, a high level service for a fairly s- slim staff. I mean, yes, we are larger in New Bedford, but our, our, our I T department's only about eight or ten people. And, and that's, that's not very large for a, you know, for a jurisdiction of size. That doesn't count the, the school side, but still. Uh, so, you know, I, I, I just think, you know, I, I, having a decent, um, you know, a decent I T presence. Um, the one that's responsive to the staff provides them the uh, the, 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 the responding, you know, it could be even to just a basic hardware support. Um, is just, you know, absolutely essential to making sure that the, that the system continues to run the way it needs to.
Thank you for those examples. Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, talking about capital plan, uh, what's your experience in implementing a capital plan and uh, how do you go about that and what that process?
I, I have some experience with that too. Um, in uh uh, New Bedford, one of the, one of the reasons I was brought into New Bedford is because of my prior experience in capital work. And um, one of the early achievements we had in New Bedford within the first six or eight months was the development of the city, city's first C I P. Um, New Bedford had never had a C I P before I came. Um, the, uh, well, I see the ambulance is behind me, it's in the flash back there. Um, the uh, the, the C I P um, is, that we run is a, is a bi- is a biannual process uh, where we start with what we call a capital needs assessment, where we have stakeholders, you know, provide us kind of their wish list of all the things they need to do, would like to do, and so forth and so on. Um, could be anything from a new community center to a, you know, to a new fire apparatus, a bunch of things. And um, and then we kind of cull it down into our five-year C I P. And the whole idea, whole, whole so the philosophy of our C I P in New Bedford is to, is to be able to um, uh achieve what we need to do from a capital standpoint while maintaining our debt load, not, not, you know, particularly, not, not damage, not, not putting ourselves in a bad place for our debt calculus or overall debt load and the impact on levy. And we've done that pretty successfully. We've done hundreds of millions of dollars worth of work um, over the past uh seven years, um, including uh, uh, two new schools, a new public safety center that were under construction, a um, uh a bunch of, you know, sort of roof replacements and, you know, things like that, window replacements, some projects like that. Um, repairs uh to schools and so on. And uh, it, we've done it in a way that, that's, that's really resulted in only a marginal increase in our annual debt service. So um, yeah, so I've, I've done that in um, so I did that in New Bedford, um, in uh Loudoun County, I was involved with capital planning, I was, 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 was budget officer. And uh, Fauquier County, I took the lead on that as well, so long, long experience in capital planning.
Thank you. Uh, Leah.
Uh, okay, so I, I know in our semi-final rounds, we touched a little bit on social media, but uh, my question's a little bit different today. Um, it would be, how would you use social media in a positive way for the town?
Okay, so um, you have a, a number of tools at your disposal um, in Lakeville already, which you can, which I think are probably not being used as much as they could be. For example, um, Lake, uh, Lake Cam the TV, um, which I guess we're on right now, probably. Um, so, you know, for the most part, that's been used, I think, as a, as a vehicle for carrying meetings. Um, think about if we could take that as an opportunity for um, selectman office hours, for um outreach by the town administrator to the, uh, you know, to, to, to the community, maybe an overview of the upcoming town meeting articles, all sorts of things like that. Um, and uh, use as an opportunity to kind of convey to the, to the, to the, to the, uh, to the public. Um, you know, you do a pretty good job of, of informing um, people regarding their um, uh, you know, regarding sort of like code red type issues, you know, things like that. Um, and that's, but, you know, in my mind, that's kind of just the, the bare minimum of what we need to be doing. Um, for a community, especially in this modern world to maintain, you know, it needs to be informed and you need to have sort of, sort of a engaged collaborative community. That may mean things that aren't necessarily, um, you know, of the government. Um, you know, you know, finding a way, you know, encouraging people on the community to create their own sort of hometown Lakeville sort of, you know, site on Facebook or something like that, so people can talk and, and, and exchange ideas and so on. Um, it's probably a very helpful thing as well. Um, and uh, you know, what, what I would, what I would try to do is anything I could do out there in the community to help people, you know, under, you know, sort of identify the, the people who can help with that and, and, and bring them along. Um, but as far as the, uh, the town itself, I just think there are some things we could do just to get a little more engaged on Twitter. You know, on, on, on Facebook, it has its ups and downs, both those social media platforms, but they're here to stay. And um, and uh, it just kind of gives people a better idea of what's going on out there. And it would be, I think, you know, like I said, a combination of video text, you know, video messaging, messages and so on.
Okay, thank you.
Brian.
Ari, the, the Lakeville residents are very vocal about the fact that they want to try to keep the town's character and charm what it is today. However, also very vocal about the fact that they enjoy the regionally low tax rate that they have, and they'd really like to not see it go up very much. So, you know, what strategies would you employ, um, if you were our town administrator, to kind of identify some of these projects that are necessary, whether they're in the master plan or not? You know, to get them funded and such without putting the major impact on the residents, given that about eighty-seven percent of our tax revenue does come from residential property tax?
Um, so some of that's economic development. Some of that's um through uh, some of the redevelopment proposals that you have there, we all are working on right now. Um, for example, like the old hospital, stuff like that. Um, but in some of these spaces along four ninety-five, some of the, 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 the lots along there. Um, I, I, I do think that there is a a need to be frank with the community. I think this is something that we've lost, I'm going to, I'm going to wax philosophical for a second. I think some, something that we've lost uh, uh, as a society over the past few decades is it, is the willingness or ability to be frank with the community about that things have costs and that, that, you know, that there's no such thing as a free lunch. Um, that doesn't mean we don't do what we can to try to minimize costs, because that's our charge, that's what we need to do. Um, we do that through management of debt load, we do that through the uh, uh, looking at, you know, fee structure, um, development fees and so on. And uh, you know, and, and, and other sources of revenue. Um, but, you know, the, 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 the fact of the matter is that if you want to have nice things, they cost. And um, if there's a, a desire, if there's a desire to do that, and this is really on the part, you know, this is really a discussion that needs to happen on the part of the community, like, let's, I'll just let's suppose somebody wants to build a new community center, right? And they think it'd be a great idea, and they're really pushing for this idea. Well, then the question has to be, are you, you know, are you going to be okay with a ten or fifty million dollar capital project with the, you know, the million dollar a year debt service on? Are you or not? And, and that, that's just, that, that's just, that's just math. So um, it, it, you know, I, 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 I have a lot of respect for people, and I think that it's important, you know, to to show that respect by communicating clearly and honestly about, about the, about the implications for things.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, given the size and location and demographics of our community, what would you consider the key issues and what actions would you take to address them?
Um, because I touched on some of that earlier. So I, I, you know, I, 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 I say that, that right now, Lakeville's a really interesting point, I think, in its development. Um, you know, there, there's, there's a lot of opportunity if you want it for development. Um, but, you know, you, you need to really think seriously about what the, the impact that'll have on Lakeville's unique character, which is unique and, and, and worth preserving. And um, and how that, you balance those needs. And that's part of, Brian, what I was trying to get at earlier. You know, my question about costs and things like that is, is kind of the dealing with, understand, you know, uh um, assessing and understanding that, that, the, um, the, the economy between want and need and um, and imp- and downstream implications and so on. And they um, um, I, I, I think that, you know, there the, the, the master plan makes a really, I think it makes a really good point of, of identifying kind of the the, the short-term need for professionalizing the workforce, for building up staff a little bit, to be able to address some of these pressures and needs that are out here. But, but that, 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 that doesn't really address the question of, do you want those things or not? And, and what, and what it is that you want. And that, that's really what, you know, what, what, what you're about and what the planning board's about and so on, that are very selective bodies. And um, it's, it's, it's the role of staff to, you know, to implement that one way or the other. Um, you know, I, two counties I worked for in, in Virginia that were um, kind of con- severe images of each other. Um, Loudoun County, where I worked for eleven years, it's one of the fastest of um, growing uh jurisdictions in the country. Um, when I started there in nineteen ninety-seven, there were a hundred and twenty thousand people. By the time I left in two thousand eight, there were about two hundred and sixty thousand people. They're now over four hundred thousand people in Loudoun County. Um, so Jason, to Dulles Airport, they've had tremendous development. And um, what they, 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 it's a, the, the big fight there is a constant fight to decide how much they're going to allow in, where they're going to allow it, and, and, and so on. It's all kind of east of this line of Leesburg, near Dulles Airport. Um, the other county I worked for before I came up here was Fauquier County, which is just in the south of Loudoun. Um, the counties look a little bit alike, and they're kind of mir- and, you know, sixty, seventy years ago, they're basically the same place. Farm country, horse country, two thousand, you know, maybe tw- thirty, forty thousand people live in there, and um, just kind of like that quiet life. Um, Fauquier County saw what was happening loud and kind of said, no, not us. And what they decided to do was um, that they, they, they went ahead with the most aggressive um, purchase of development rights programs, conservation easement program um, in the country. And um, they've have, they've tens of thousands of, of acres reserved at this point for, from development. And um, and so, you know, when I believe the population, say you know, sixty years ago was thirty thousand people, maybe there are sixty-five, seventy thousand people there now, maybe eighty thousand people. So it's very much slower growth. They're just getting to the point now of putting in um, uh sewer in, in um, some of the, some more outlying areas of the county. So um, you know, these are all value choices. And, and um, you know, there are implications to all of them. A lot of residential development can mean a lot of revenue, but it also means a lot of cost, schools and so on. And that, and, and business and, and um, you know, facility demand and so on. And, you know, resident, a lot of residential development can, can arguably cost money. Um, you know, no development, on the other hand, could mean upward pressure on the tax rate, on tax bill for, uh, for residents, because, you know, things, things cost more over time, they just do. So um, you know, and part of what I think, you know, the importance of this, this partnership between the town administrator and the board of selectmen and the planning board and so on, is kind of navigating that process and deciding what, what it is you, um, you know, what, what you want to look like and how you want to do it.
Okay. Uh, Leah.
Um, I'm going to yield my time right now to uh, Selectman Day. Like I said before, I've uh, spent a great hour with Ari, so I want you fellas to get your questions in.
Thank you, Leah. Uh, Ari, the, the role of the town administrator, as I'm sure you're aware, is really a bridge between kind of the, the residents and the local government. Um, you know, in past years, you may have seen Lakeville's at an issue where we don't get a lot of interest in people pulling papers for very important positions, like we don't get non, uh, people sending in letters of interest for uh, boards and commissioners to be appointed to after consideration. Uh, wh- what would you see your role be as the town administrator to kind of, you know, bolster that interest to get the folks more interested or more aware or more informed of what these positions mean and importance and try to get involved?
I think it all goes back to the um, to the, you know, social media policy we talked about, kind of that engagement policy. Um, you know, just uh, you know, trying to identify people who are, who are involved and interested, um encouraging them to, to, to come forward, being a little more present on social media, being out there in people's minds and so on. I think that, that, that's a big part of it. I think that, you know, small towns often have trouble, you know, getting, um, I mean seems like New Bedford have trouble getting people to, to be honest with you. So um, you know, it's just the nature of life nowadays. People have um, you know, you know jobs and lives to do, and, you know, places like Lakeville, which is, to a certain degree, a bedroom community, you know, that, that's, that's, that's a real possi- that's a real real challenge, I would think. Um, you know, when you come home at night, you don't really want to go to another meeting. But um, uh, you know, I think it's a, I, I think, you know part of what our role is as stewards of, of, of government is to um, act as cheerleaders for government as well. And that doesn't mean like, like a propaganda cheerleader. It means, you know, ga- ga- um, working with people. Uh, we're, we're working in the community, making ourselves available, making sure that people understand, you know, get people to understand what it is that we do and, and how we do it. Um, one of the um, uh, this is kind of a cool thing that, that our mayor that, that did, um, when he started, uh, recently. At least, we started back in twenty twelve, um, he was elected. He created this thing called uh, city jobs, it's like dirty jobs. Where he would um, just like do a different job, and it'd be like a ten-minute video of him working with, you know, the library, or you know, with the public works crew, or the fire guys, or something like that. And um, it um, it, it was, you know, it's a political thing, and it's great press for a politician, but um, boy, we got a lot of But um, boy, we got a lot of positive feedback for that. I think people are interested in um, in, you know, in finding out what it is that they're where the tax dollars are going, what it is that the, the town's doing and, and, and how it goes about doing it. Um, the uh, um, and then in turn, you know, helps motivate people to, to be, to be involved and engaged. So um, I think, you know, having that open door, being approachable and being um, available and present is, is, is a really important part of it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, um, what are the most important qualities you seek, uh, you seek when hiring a town employee? And why are these qualities most important to you?
What are, okay, what are the most important qualities I seek when, okay, got it, sorry. I thought I, I missed a question a little bit. Okay, so um, when hiring a staff member in general, um, for me, you know, first of all, look make sure that they have capability to do the job, basic experience and so on. Once you get past that, you really want someone with the right kind of approach and tone. Um, you know, I, I, it would be my intention to try to, you know, um, create an organization or facilitate an organization that, that is, um, that is, uh, that's based on teamwork and communication. And um, you need to have um, player, your team players on that organization, people who are ready to, to engage and, 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 um, and communicate and and, and, and also, and, you know, tackle the job as it comes. Um, I don't necessarily expect somebody to have no life except for their job. I think that's probably not, I think that's not sustainable. Um, but you do want them to have a commitment to the job and a, uh, and a commitment to, to doing the job right and, and, and and sort of pride in work and, and ownership of what they do. Um, I have, um, you know, in my time in New Bedford and other times, I've hired and, and occasionally had to, you know, part ways with, with uh, the staff and the, you know, in, 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 yeah, several times. It's never a fun experience, but you really, th- the culture fit is just so important. And making sure that, that this, that the culture is, is what you, is what you need it to be. Um, I would, is a little, running straight from the question a little bit, but I want to make the point. Um, I think it's really important, um, early on to establish cultural values in the part of the organization. Um, one of the things I'd want to do very early on, once working, once, once, after working with the board of selectmen on the, the, uh, the, the question of goals I discussed earlier, is um, working with the tat- with the town staff to develop um, a value statement and an understanding of what it is that we, that this, that, that our unit, our organization's all about. Um, unit cohesion is just so important. And um, you know, if there's anything the town administrator can do, that's, that, you know, anything more important than that, I don't know what it is. The town administrator is to develop that unit cohesion, that commitment to, to getting the job done.
Thank you. Uh, Leah?
I feel like I want to ask a follow-up to that, but um, so what would your first, like, thirty days look like when you're saying, you know?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Would you come in and sort of say, okay, you know, I look at this, I look at that, this is where I think you know, that whole first thirty days kind of a thing?
So the, the, sort of the onboarding question, yeah. So um, the, the, um, the first thing I, I, I think is important is to approach the organization with a feeling of, with a, with a, with a tone and feeling of respect. This is an organization that, you know, pre-exists me and that is, that is, um, you know, been around and doing its thing and getting the job done. So the first thing to understand is, you, you can't, you can't work on a machine until you understand how the machine works. And um, to, to really dig into what the organization's doing, you know, obviously meeting with the staff, understanding how the work, you know, how, how things are organized, how things, you know, work and so on. And who's, who's, uh, who's, who's a positive contributor, who, you know, who maybe not, I don't know. And um, um, you know, at the same time, working with the, the board of selectmen to make sure that you guys understand what it is of my approaches and what I'm trying to do. Um, and that, you know, that there's, everyone's sort of in harmony about, you know, what we're, what we're, what we're up to. Um, and then, um, you know, I'd say, um, you know, I, I, the, the, the initial strategy of listening is really important. And that would last, you know, for some period of time, a few weeks, a few months, I don't know. Uh, uh, just kind of understanding what it is that's going on. Um, I think the fact that we're in COVID makes that transition a lot more, a bit more difficult. Hopefully we're moving out of that soon, but you know, we're in it right now. And um, a lot of people working remotely, not really seeing people in person the same way and so on. Um, I for one can't wait till that's done. But um, it, it's, it, it is a, it is a handicap in terms of the ability to, to manage effectively. Uh, and you know, I would um, do the normal things. You know, set up regular staff meetings, things to keep the, the group functioning and, and working. And also frankly, to inform me as to what's going on, to wait for me to know how, how people are working. And then, um, you know, building from there, um, you know, identifying strengths and weaknesses. And um, and you know, engaging in that, that, um, that values exercise that I told you about, and maybe a little strategic planning uh, of what it is at work that we're trying to do. I think it's incumbent upon the town administrator, once we set those goals with the board of selectmen to figure out how you're gonna actualize those. And that's not a one-man job, you know, that, that, that's, that's in the part of the organization. So um, I, I would, you know, try, I think it's be spending a lot of the first, you know, say six months or so kind of getting acclimated and, and starting to, you know, put those systems into place.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Brian?
Hugh, so this is the final question I've asked all the other candidates. I believe we've touched on these, but I'll ask anyways. So, you know, once a town's budget has been set, gone through town meeting and been approved for any given department. Uh, what level of autonomy do you expect a department head to have at that point? Or could you explain what kind of cadence you have with regards to reviews or checking in to make sure they're on point, you know, drifting off point? How do you like to handle those things once they've been set originally?
So the responsibility of management obviously goes well beyond setting the budget, you know. Um, in fact, the budget is, in my mind, is almost one of the end stages. A, a budget is, all a budget is, is, is a uh, material expression of the, um, of the decisions that you make in terms of policy. So um, you know, wha- um, once that budget is adopted, um, one of the, you know, when, even before that, but as, as as part of the regular process, um, I would be meeting with the department head on a fairly regular basis and getting a sense of what's going on. We probably have a standing meeting. Um, again, we probably have, um, uh, I would want to have all staff, all department head meetings as well. So some, both some individual and group. And uh, as, as, as a regular thing, um, I, I'm a pretty present manager. Um, I don't micromanage the people, but you know, the, the, the department heads wouldn't, shouldn't be surprised to see me show up at their desk, you know? Once COVID's done. And um, and just kind of, you know, sit down and say, okay, what's going on? Um, it, it's good to visit people in their territory now and then, because that, that, you know, they're, they're more at ease and it's, it's a, it's a more, it's a better conversation. And um, and just kind of, um, you know, adjustments will need to be made. Um, occasionally, maybe you need to, you know, to, 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 to adjust priorities because circumstances change. So some piece of equipment breaks down or whatever, um, you know, there's a need to, to hire somebody to do one thing, we have to find the money somewhere, you know, whatever. Could be anything. Um, so it, it's, you know, it, it's, it's a constant process of sort of you know, it's like sailing, you know, where you're tacking your boat back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, try to catch the wind. And that, that's um, um, that, that's, that's what management of a, of any governmental, I think probably any kind of organization is really like.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, before we uh, go to any follow-up questions, there is one question on Facebook. Um, talk about your management style with people with a blend of long-term employees and newer employees.
Okay, I think I touched on that. Um, but you know, I'll, I'll reiterate, my, my, what I try to do is, um, uh, you know, respect staff, um, you know, uh, understand their you know, it's kind of their agency and their, their need to, um, you know, their, what, what they bring to the table. Um, respect and value encourage competence and dedication. Um, when something isn't working out, make it clear, progress, you know, if necessary, progressive discipline and so on. Um, but um, you know, to go through that process that you, um, that you need to go through to correct and, and, and maintain direction. Um, you know, I'm also, you know, cognizant of the um, sort of the legal liability issues as well that you have to be so- sensitive to when it comes to personnel management and so on. And that's, you know, something to just keep aware of. And uh, and you know, one of the reasons, uh, aside from being the right thing to do, one of the reasons why progressive discipline is the way to go. And um, to uh, you know, really just kind of be engaged as much as possible and um, and to and to, you know, value the staff, make sure they understand that they're, that what they're doing is valued. And that, um, what they're, and, and how they, um, and how they're working is, you know, is, is valued and respected. Um, I think I mentioned this during this, the, uh, the semifinals interviews. Um, we've done a lot of we, um, in New Bedford, this is in Fauquier too, in Loudoun, we did a lot of work to try to build up kind of all sorts of sort of institutional frameworks for uh, for, for, for building that team cohesion and for getting, and for um, uh, and, and managing, um, unit performance and, and staff performance as well. Um, you know, in New Bedford, you know, we, it goes from silly things like we have, uh, like our, like our annual holiday parties, you know, which are, which are a lot of fun. Yankee swap and so on, to um, uh, um, the, our, our annual retreats that we do with our department heads where we go through strategic, strategic planning exercises, work on mission statements and so on. Um, we have a strong commitment in New Bedford to a performance management program where, um, we look at pro- uh, performance measures and pro- uh, for uh, department level, get a sense of what type of work, you know, what type of units are producing, what type of, you know, effect, how effective they are. Um, and using that as a management tool to uh, to identify areas for improvement or areas that maybe we're doing more than, we have more resources than we need. And um, and making those adjustments. Um, that, that's a process that requires a little bit of staff and a little bit of work and probably a little down the road for, you know, but, but is, is, um, something that's, that's very, very helpful and something I've used in a number of places, so.
Okay, any of the members of the board have any follow-up questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Uh, Leah?
Uh, no, I'm just curious if Ari has anything for us.
Oh, well, okay. Um, one of the, um, things that I'm, that, that really excites me about Lakeville is um, the opportunity to kind of build this, um, so the, you take the opportunity, given, since the, the, you know, I, I believe in every, you know, the old cliche, every challenge has an opportunity as well, you know? And um, and I think that, that applies in Lakeville right now. You have a situation right now where you've been without a town administrator for a while. You have a lot of um, you have a number of development items out there and you, and you, you all have seen your, your meetings. That, that you all have identified, uh, you know, kind of the resource need that you have and, and kind of need to kind of do things. Do, do, do you remember to do some stuff? And that, that's an opportunity I'm looking forward to. And I'm kind of curious what your, just in general, what your, your philosophy is as far as um, sort of the, the, the needs of the, of the town going forward. And you know, what, what you'd like to see out of your town administrator, what type of, what type of approach you'd like to see?
I, well, I think there's, uh, there's no question, uh, first of all, that, uh, we have budgeted for a town planner. Uh, there's no question that we need the town planner. We're going through that exercise right now to to put the job description together and so forth and so on. So I mean, that definitely, you know, is a plus. Um, it's like anything else, you know, every, everything's a challenge as far as the overall departments are concerned. I think that from a staffing standpoint, you know, we're pretty good. We're pretty good shape, you know, we've made those, some of those adjustments. Uh, one of the things that we added was, uh, two full-time firefighters because of COVID nineteen, which was a major, major problem, you know, for us, but we did, we did do that.
It was a challenge for you guys, yeah, that's.
It was, well, yeah, you know, but we did get cares, we got cares reimbursement because we right now, they're temporary. So because they're temporary, we can get reimbursement for the, uh, cares money. But, you know, beginning, uh, not this year, but following year, it'll have to be addressed. So, uh, Leah or Brian, I see you wanted to say something, so go ahead.
Um, I'll jump in and, and say that, you know, I, I agree that and I, I admit this on a daily basis, that, you know, my weakness is definitely land use. Um, planning and, you know, we have some newer folks on committees, um, planning board. Uh, so, you know, I, I think we need some good leadership in that area. Um, I think, um, and again, in preparing for, for these, these interviews, I talked to, you know, all the department heads and you know, I think all department heads want to know that, you know, they can go to someone for, like, you know, resources for if they can't find something, they want a leader who can, you know, help them out, you know? Um, so I, you know, I'm very protective of the town, but also the employees. I'm, I'm just very protective of the town that I live in and I just really want to be able to give you know, the town, uh, uh, someone who's gonna be looking out for Lakeville. And we are at that crossroads right now between development and trying to stay rural. And I think we need to address it in a major way as soon as possible. So that's, you know, a challenge that is probably gonna be coming up sooner than, than, than later. Um, but I feel like we do need to give some of our department heads who are working overtime because they're the only expert in that certain area that we have some assistance.
Yeah.
And if that means, you know, suggesting we do, you know, more peer stuff or suggesting we do more consulting or suggesting we hire, you know, so I'd really like someone to be able to come in and take a look at things and say I think you're doing a really good job here. I think this is good for now, but may need some improvement. And here, I think you're gonna need some improvement right away, you know? Really, yeah. I'm looking for someone who can come in and make, I know these kinds of assessments take a while. But I'm probably gonna be looking for some sooner, sooner than later on the assessment, so.
Great, I appreciate that, that's great.
Yep, Brian?
Yep, so I was taking some notes here to help you kind of walk through this. So Ari, what I'm, you know, looking for is someone that can come in and, and to back up and tell you why, you know, I was the first time Selectman a few months ago. First time went for any elected office. And one of the things that I've encountered a lot of is when you ask folks, uh, because I'm always trying to say like, you know, how do we come to doing it this way? And the answer is always, well, we always have. And you know, that worked great for a number of decades. And I really want to have, have somebody come in and like do that top-down review to say, well, here's some improvements or some other options that now exist that maybe didn't in the past. Not that, it's not to say that the re- way people are doing it is wrong or they need to be reprimanded, just that maybe have an open set of eyes to look to see how could we modernize perhaps some things today. Now, we've had certainly a large number of selectmen rotate over the last two or three years. So I really want someone that in this position that is capable of, when a new person comes on, if it's their first time, helping them understand the boundaries of the office. What are the, what are the roles of the selectmen? What are the roles of the town administrator and everybody else, so that you can kind of create that cohesion to understand who's doing what, so there's not this conflict of you know, interests or passions all the time, since different selectmen have different interests. Um, you know, I also want someone that can inform residents really well. Maybe it's not them directly, but they know how to. Uh, we suffer from getting, I would say, um, good digested information out to the public. So that when these big gnarly issues do come up, it's, it's very hard to figure out what are the votes that have to happen? What are the regulations that we're following? Why is it happening this way? So I really want someone that can, you know, educate the public as well as they can educate us on why things are happening the way that they are. Um, and in the interest of time, I'll stop there because I could probably just keep going and going.
I'm sure you could, that, that's, I mean, you, you, um, you, you, you pretty much, I think, um, gave the testimonial for why, you know, I know why, I know you've put in the town planner, but why you need a planner. You know, and why, and why you need a town administrator, you know, because you really do need that's kind of professional level staff sort of helping you out on the policy side. And also helping with the communication piece. I think it's, I think it's absolutely crucial right now for you.
Okay, it's, uh, your turn. Have you got anything else you want to say, Ari, or, you know?
I think I, I think I asked my thing there, so, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I really, I really do appreciate the opportunity, um, to, to meet with you. Um, I, I've enjoyed this process and I'm impressed by it and, um, I wish you the best of luck.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate you.
Good evening, your sir.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, so here we are.
Here we are.
So, um, the question, is there any discussion about any of the candidates at this point? Um, is the, uh, is the board ready to, uh, vote to appoint a new town administrator? And um, in my opinion, this is me, I'm ready to appoint a new town administrator.
I believe, am I live here? Yes. I believe I'm ready to appoint a town administrator. I thought I was the one that was gonna need more time to deliberate, but.
Yeah, I, first I just want to say, um, again, thank you to the search committee and MRI. Uh, fantastic work. I feel like we find ourselves with a spoil of riches here. We've got some really good options to pick from. Um, I mean, from these, these interviews, I feel I have a good sensation of, you know, what my order of candidates are and, um, I would be willing to make a recommendation, but if we wanted to wait twenty-four hours for any department head input, I'd also welcome that.
Um, I just jump here and say, you know, I know I was the one at a few, many meetings ago who, um, when Brian suggested When Brian suggested the higher salary, we had the conversation about the salary. I do think the salary being a little bit higher brought us some really qualified candidates, I will say that. So I appreciate that Brian, you know, made me kind of reevaluate, you know, what my salary consider consideration was. So Brian, I really thank you for that because I do think that bumping the salary up really gave us some really quality candidates. So I appreciate, you know, where you went with that whole thing. I'm I'm ready to make a decision, so I, you know, I.
I know, Brian, that, you know, some of the department heads have already reached out. You know, and talked to certain people in the in their their associated departments and I. We, I think most of us got those comments as far as I know. So I don't think we really have to wait 24 hours for the department heads to make any further comments, but that's me.
I did have some discussions with some folks as well after the names went public and the search committee members, so. Do you want to move forward?
Okay, that being said, I move to authorize municipal resources. To make a conditional offer of employment to Ari Sky for the position of Lakeville Town Administrator. This offer is conditioned upon satisfactory background review. An investigation conducted by municipal resources and the successful negotiation of the terms of appointment by the board of selectmen.
I'm glad you said my first choice in that. That would have been real awkward, real quick.
That's why this is tough to do.
You know, okay, can we second?
Second the motion?
Excuse me.
Just a little bit of discussion here.
Yes, excuse me, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So honestly, I, you know, I was thinking about doing the six semifinal interviews. It was a long day, each interview was an hour, but I have to say that. That six hours went by faster than I ever thought it would, meeting the six people that were brought to us, honest to God, I just. You know, the the talent that came before us, the experience level was just, you know. It was, it really was, it was a really difficult choice, you know, to narrow it down from, you know, the first field, so. I've learned a lot from this experience and I, you know, thank everyone's efforts. I know George Philopolis isn't here tonight, but. You know, Nate Darling, Clarinda has gone above and beyond in this process. Todd, yes, claps for Clarinda and to Buzz and Bob, you know, thank you to, you know, answering all my stressful phone calls and. You know, calming me down a few times, walking me off the ledge a few times, but it's been a really. Really valuable experience.
Yeah, I just do want to say again, the other two candidates we spoke to tonight, both very strong performances, definitely hold their heads high, just to get to this round's amazing. You know, you never know, we might be in the need for somebody else with similar talents in the future, so please don't lose our number. You know, they were great folks. I really would like to work with all three of them, but I I do support, you know, what we have in front of us right now.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, all those in favor?
Fabian, I.
Day I.
La camera, I. With the board's permission. I would like to sit down with Ari and talk about a draft contract as quickly as possible.
Should we make that into a motion or?
If you want.
Yeah, I, for for many reasons, I would like to nominate Rich to. Work on the contract negotiations with Ari.
I'd second that motion. I I may have some input and some ideas as well, so if we can find the appropriate way to bounce that around, but in a time sensitive manner, that'd be great.
Sure, no problem, we can do that.
Got a second?
Yes, second, sorry.
Any further discussion?
No.
So Bob or Buzz, whoever's going to follow up with them, with him.
Yep, we'll we'll take care of that. We'll call tonight. We'll call tonight.
You know, we want to try to get together with him as quickly as possible, so. Anytime after 2 o'clock tomorrow and the rest of the week's fine with me.
Well, what we need to do, Buzz, and you gave Leah the motion and she already read it, it's in the record and stuff, but we also need to get a release. Mari, so we can conduct the background checks.
Yeah, I got that.
Simple thing, yeah. We're just faxing over to him, he'll send, not fax it, we'll send it over to him and he'll get it back to us, I'm sure.
Do you need a motion to that or not?
We need to vote on the motion on the floor too.
Yeah, you need to do that, not not so much the 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 other form, Buzz, we just send that off to the candidate.
Okay.
We'll call them.
Yeah, it's 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 really our, we send it to them, it's their release. So we can have the background check initiated and that take, that could take, could be 10 days, could be two weeks, it just depends. But we'll have a complete confidential background check for you folks. You know, as soon as we can, but at least a week and maybe 10 days.
Okay, all those in favor?
All those in favor of Rich being the contract negotiator, Fabian, I.
Day I. La camera, I. Okay.
But before you adjourn, I think just on behalf of Bob and I and MRI, we've enjoyed the engagement and. I think, you know, having an attractive salary was excellent for the pool of candidates. And it's just, I mean, we, you know, we had six that we interviewed the other day. You know, and all of them were good, you know, I, they they, and then the three that you interviewed tonight, it's. You know, we, it's unfortunate from Bob and I's perspective, you only can choose one. Because all three of them are very talented individuals and, you know. Unfortunately, it's only one, that you can fish your town administrator. But you did a nice job and the committee was excellent.
Chairman, you you folks should be pretty proud.
Two weeks off and.
You had, you had a nice pool of people to choose from and people made a conscious decision. You heard tonight, two of those people tonight have not been in any other search. They focused on Lakeville. It says a lot about your community and from Buzz and I perspective, the search committee was terrific to work with. You do a lot of good things in Lakeville and we thank you.
Thank you too.
Thank you.
A lot of work and we appreciate it, so. All right, so. We'll hear from you tomorrow and then we may ask you to. You know, since I can't ask Brian. To get some information from Brian as to what he wants for the, some of the things he might want on the contract, so.
Yeah, you can send it to us, we'll send it over to you.
Yeah, then we'll, they'll draft the contract up, Brian and everybody review it and hopefully if everything goes as planned, we'll approve it next Monday night.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, okay. Wait, just one second, any new business or any old business that once we brought up?
I vote for a raise for Clarinda.
Right about that.
Todd's giving the thumbs up there.
Yeah, me too. For Clarinda.
I would, I don't know what the process would be, but I'd recommend our our office send a letter of thanks to the other two gentlemen as well. Yes, their participation.
That would be excellent.
Yes.
That would be excellent on your behalf, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second the motion.
All those in favor.
Fabian, I.
Day I, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. La camera, I.
Good night, everyone.